Good morning. Today is Monday, November 1st, 2021. Commissioners Court is meeting in regular open session. Today, we are joined by ASL interpreters Dario Garcia and Selena Salu. Commissioner Olgin, would you like to introduce our Pledge of Allegiance students this morning?
Yes, thank you, Jessica. It's my pleasure to introduce two 4th grade students from Mission Ridge Elementary, who are joining us this morning. So, we have with us Sofia Cavazos Salazar and Juliana Annali Rodriguez. Good morning.
Good morning to both of you. Thank you for being with us. We are ready for you.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Stand up, hands over your heart, and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where witches dance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Hey, you got a standing ovation. That was really cool. Thank you for that opening statement. That was very cute of you. Thank you so much. You have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye, Sofia and Juliana.
And now, we will have an invocation from Pastor Anthony Bedoya, Calvary Chapel, Sun City.
Pastor, go ahead.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I'd like to lift up the county judge and commissioners. I pray that you would give them boldness and courage to make decisions based on what you want, Lord. I pray that they would make decisions that would benefit the citizens of El Paso and that they would work as a team and in unity. Please protect them, watch over them. I also ask, Lord, that you fill this room and this building with your Holy Spirit. I also want to pray for the county employees. They are the backbone and keep this place going. As we get ready to return 100%, keep them safe and please give them peace of mind. Please protect them and their families. I also want to lift up our department heads and elected officials. I pray that you would give them wisdom. I pray that you would keep them humble and that they would remain humble, Lord, and be kind to their staff and treat them with respect. I pray that they would realize that you put them there in their positions. I also want to pray for our law enforcement, Lord. We're so thankful for them. Keep them safe, watch over them as they protect us, Lord, and watch over their families and give them peace. I pray for unity in El Paso and America. There's so much hate and division, and only you can bring healing upon our nation. I pray for you've been kicked out, that they would welcome you back. You are the only one who can restore us back to being a strong and united nation. I pray people will not put their faith in a political party, but put their faith in you. You are the only one who can restore this great nation, and as long as you are being rejected, the situation is not going to get better, but only worse. Please bring healing, Lord, to this wonderful nation of ours. We thank you for your mercy, your grace, and your unconditional love. You never reject us, even when we reject you. You are still there for us, no matter what. I want to thank you, Lord, for what you did on the cross for us. Help us live our lives that are pleasing to you and be appreciative of what you have done and continue to do for us. We love you, Jesus, and it's in Jesus's name that we pray. Amen. Y'all have a great day.
Thank you, Pastor. Two very important things that I really appreciate. One, that you came in person, and I know you took the time. And during these times, we really appreciate your words and your thoughts. So, we thank you for that, but also for including our county employees that really do a lot of the work or most of the work. And so, thank you for that and department heads. So, thank you for widening your thoughts and prayers to all our county family. Thank you very much.
Thank you. God bless you all.
Thank you. God bless you. Thank you.
Judge, would you like to make some opening comments before we begin?
Yeah, just want to welcome all of you. On behalf of our commissioners and myself, your county judge, I thank you for being here today. We have some amazing resolutions and some great things happening in our agenda today. So, we thank you for being here. We've always said that we're very respectful to participating in the government, in county government or city government, because that helps us to know what we need to be doing. And we remember, when we see all of you here, how important it is that we do and make the right decision. So, we thank you for being here today. I hope you enjoy the resolutions and the information that takes place during the entire Commissioners Court, and not only yourselves, but everyone here that's watching virtually. So, thank you very much. Jessica?
Item 4 is the consent agenda composed of items 4A through 4AE. We do have several items we would need to make changes. For item 4C, we request this item be deleted. Item 4C reads, "Approve and authorize funding for a temporary court coordinator for the 171st District Court from November 8, 2021 to November 19, 2021, in the amount of $2,613." Funding is available in General Fund, G-Admin, Contingency Personnel. And for item 4D, we have a correction to read in from the County Attorney's Office. The item should read, "Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the Practice Panther User Agreement and Addendum with Panther Software LLC for Case Management Software for the County Attorney's Office from November 1, 2021 to October 31, 2024, in the amount of $69,123." Funding is available in SR County Attorney Support Professional Services General, contract number 2021-0855. And also for item 4V, we are requesting this item be postponed one week. Item 4V reads, "Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the agreement with 4Up Doing Business as Golf Complete Inc. for point-of-sale, food and beverage, marketing, reporting, online program registration, and facility rentals software hardware for the Parks and Recreation Department for a three-year term." Funding is available in CP- C-P-E-R-P-S-F-T-W-R-12 IT Software, contract number 2021-0784. Are there any items members of the court or public would like to pull for further discussion?
Betsy, what is the item on the binational? I apologize, I can't locate it.
Yes, sir. That would be item number I.
I, that's correct. Yeah, on this one, I just want to, I want to take it out because I think it requires and deserves, you know, public attention because it's such an important event that's coming up. Just wanted to give a little bit of background and where we're headed. Other than that, nothing other than try to get everyone to understand the importance of this particular item. Any others?
Judge Jay is in John.
Okay. Any others? If not, then I'll move to approve without the items that we discussed.
Second. Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson is absent. Judge Samaniego?
He is here now. Okay.
Commissioner. Commissioner Robinson, we are voting on the consent agenda. Were there any items you'd like to pull?
No.
Would you like to place your vote?
Yes.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 5, Resolutions 5A. Approve and adopt a resolution recognizing November 2021 as Youth Substance Use Prevention and Awareness Month in El Paso County, Texas.
Commissioner Leon?
Thank you, Judge. Commissioners, it gives me a tremendous amount of honor and pleasure to be able to read this resolution into our records. But before I start, I'd like to ask Mr. Travis Kirkendall, if you don't mind standing at the podium, I'm going to be introducing some people that are here that took the time to join us this morning. And, you know, before I read the resolution, I've got to say that Mr. Kirkendall has been there at the head of HIDA for 27 years. And you must be on your second lifetime here, Travis. So, we appreciate what you're doing there and all these folks that are here behind you to support this important issue. And I've got to tell you that even when I was in law enforcement, so many drugs are out there now with the introduction of fentanyl and other very powerful drugs that the fight cannot stop. And I really appreciate you all being here to really give it that underlining that we need, that it's so important. So, I'll read the resolution, Travis, and if you don't mind, you can see a few words, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, sir.
Whereas, "The underage vaping, marijuana, and THC prevention campaign initiated by West Texas HIDA Prevention Initiative seeks to raise awareness of the dangers of marijuana, vaping, and THC use and abuse, and to promote positive drug-free messages that will engage the citizens of El Paso County in leading healthier lifestyles. And whereas, the youth drug trafficking media and awareness campaign created by West Texas HIDA, the El Paso County Attorney's Office, the El Paso County Juvenile Justice Center, and the Texas National Guard Drug Demand Reduction Program was initiated to educate the citizens of El Paso on the dangers of youth recruitment to transport illegal drugs across the border to the United States. And whereas, the threat of drug use and abuse has increased with the legalization of marijuana and cannabis products in New Mexico, we must educate our community's youth and parents on the penalties of drug trafficking, possession, and carrying of these products across state lines. And whereas, multiple community partners in El Paso County are collaborating through media and drug awareness campaigns by encouraging El Paso County residents to engage in prevention efforts that foster drug-free and healthy lifestyle choices. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court that El Paso County recognizes West Texas HIDA Prevention Initiative and their efforts by designating November 2021 as Youth Substance Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month." So, Travis, I'll let you take the podium, then I'll introduce the rest of our guests. But before that, we'll vote on it, because we may not vote on it.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. I didn't want to be in the way while you were reading that very important resolution, but thank you.
But we're going to vote first.
You're going to vote first?
Yeah.
Very good, sir.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Travis?
Thank you so very much. We appreciate your support and everything. I have with me here today a group of very distinguished individuals that make up the law enforcement
law enforcement community and also the community that has to deal with the problems of juveniles getting involved in drug trafficking and everything. And if you could indulge me just for a moment, I'd like to introduce some of the people that are with me. We have the Chief of the United States Attorney's Office, Laura Franco Gregory. We have the Head of DEA, the Special Agent in Charge Greg Mallard, the Special Agent in Charge of the FBI and El Paso Division, Jeff Downey. We have the Regional Director of the Texas Department of Public Safety, Joe Sanchez. And we have the Chief of the Border Patrol for the Big Ben Sector of the Border Patrol, Mr. Sean McCoffin. So this represents the law enforcement community, that they're all members of the HIDA Executive Board, and we work very, very closely with the prevention and rehabilitation community also. And representing them, I'd like to introduce a few of those people that are here, and then we're going to have two presentations for you to give you some statistics on, so you understand how bad the issue really is with the juveniles and being coerced by the drug traffickers to get them into the business. But we have with us today Chief Roger Martinez from the El Paso Juvenile Justice Center. We have Emily Dawson from the U.S. Attorney's Office. We have Sal Leos, the Senior Probation Officer for the Intake Services. And we've got Staff Sergeant Isaac Espinoza from the Texas Department of National Guard, and Cynthia Aginaga from the El Paso Police Department. And what I'd like to do now is to call upon Roger Martinez from the juvenile probation, and he will also introduce someone else who's going to give you the statistics and stuff. Roger?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Roger Martinez, Chief, juvenile probation officer, County of El Paso, for the record. As you can see, we have some amazing partnership here in dealing with this tremendous problem that we have going on at this point in time. I'm going to have our Senior Officer Sal Leos give you a little bit of statistics, maybe a description of the type of kids that are being targeted for these types of trafficking. And you'll see a billboard presentation that's being shown right now. As you can see, we have a sheriff's deputy who chose to be part of that photo op. So these are, of course, staged pictures. These are not real pictures, they're staged. The young person in that picture is actually one of my staff members, who is maybe 24 years old, but we kind of made him look like he was 16. So to take away from that, we're not utilizing any youth in these pictures and whatnot. They were taken there at JPD and processed through Clear Channel. But what we're going to do is have Mr. Leos come and speak to you about the type of youth that are coming into our system, and then our county attorney will discuss the prosecution efforts that are going on with the County Attorney's Office when it comes to these particular cases. Mr. Leos?
Thank you, Chief.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Just want to give you a brief summary of what our probation department has seen in the last couple of years, especially during the pandemic. We've seen an increase in port-of-entry drug trafficking cases referred to the department. From fiscal year '20 to fiscal year '21, we saw a 41% increase in these juveniles. All of these juveniles are U.S. citizens. You know, with the border being closed due to the pandemic, drug traffickers have turned to recruiting U.S. citizens who reside in Mexico. These juveniles being apprehended at the port-of-entries are between the age of 13 to 16. So, you know, in the past, most were 15 and 16-year-olds, but now we're seeing them as young as 13. Like I said, most of them reside in Mexico. About half of those juveniles attend school here in El Paso or New Mexico, and they commute back and forth, so they normally cross the border. So it's easy, well, the drug traffickers seem to think it's easier for them to come across. Another thing that we're seeing is that in the past, the majority of these juveniles were males, and now we're seeing about half and half. Half are females, half are males. And really, what's most alarming is that they're trying to smuggle more serious drugs. It's mostly methamphetamines, fentanyl, heroin, cocaine. In the last fiscal year, we didn't have a single case of marijuana, juveniles trying to bring marijuana. Where in the past, about one-third of all cases referred were marijuana-related cases. So that's very alarming because the value of these drugs is higher. So our concern is the possible retaliation to these juveniles and their families once they return back to Mexico. So I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to our county attorney, Joanne Bernal, and she's going to talk a little bit about the prosecution.
Thank you. Thank you, Joanne.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Joanne Bernal, County Attorney. Let me start by thanking Commissioner Leon for sponsoring this resolution, all the members of the court for supporting it, and of course, Mr. Kirkendall for his leadership over these many years. I'm going to be very brief, and this is our message, is that the County Attorney's Office is actively and vigorously prosecuting these cases. Since April of last year, we've prosecuted 28 youths and sought determinate sentencing, which is the highest sentence, the highest punishment that you can receive for juveniles who are caught drug trafficking. And as Mr. Leo said, we are seeing an increased number of serious drugs being trafficked. But the message behind the billboards, and I think the message that we want to send today to the parents that are listening, is that these are our kids, right? These are kids that go to EPISD, YISD, San Luis Aire. Every school district in El Paso County has kids that are being prosecuted by our office, and it is forever changing and altering the lives of both those kids and their families. And we need the parents to be aware, we need them to intercede, and they need to understand that there are very serious consequences if you are caught and you are prosecuted for trafficking drugs into the United States. So thank you for listening to our message today. We hope that by this resolution, that message will carry into our community and to parents that are listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Last that we have, Mary Ellen? Mary Ellen has been a huge backbone behind all this initiative here. We were able to get the funding through HIDA, through JPD and through the HIDA Initiative to be able to have these billboards created. But if you want to talk a little bit about the billboards and your parks and things of that nature?
Good morning. Thank you very much. Mary Ellen had known this with the West Texas HIDA, the Prevention Initiative Coordinator. I've been working in prevention for over 20 years and have seen the many changes that have come about. But this was very alarming to many of us, and with the special funding that we received from the HIDA, we were able to put together different phases of a media and a drug awareness campaign. I gave you all folders that kind of explains a little bit, so I'll just do it really short. The first phase was that we did a poster contest with the El Paso Juvenile Justice Center to include the Challenge Academy. We were not able to reach out to the schools, and they graciously assisted us in being able to getting the view from the youth on that. And then Phase Two was we posted the winning posters and across the county on billboards. We also did digital messaging, and then now we're into Phase Two with the bookmarks that we have distributed all across the county through our partners. Phase Three is this one here that we have included with the extra funding on youth drug trafficking, because it was also just an eye-opener that these things were happening. And so I want to tell you thank you so much for supporting this resolution, and we hope that the community will assist us. I'd also like to thank Cliff Williams with Clear Channel, who was, he and his team assisted us in being able to produce these, to get that messaging out. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just to acknowledge one other group with El Paso, North Health Foundation and the Family Leadership Council, who's also been very instrumental in helping us with this initiative as well. Any questions?
Chief, thank you. I've got to say, before I do that, let me introduce some other guests that are with us virtually, staff members, and these may have already been read, I apologize, but staff members from the El Paso County Juvenile Community Improvements Engagement Teams and the Samuel F. Santana Academy, Challenge Academy, Matthew Taylor, DEA, Maria Silic with the El Paso Human Services, Community Youth Development Program Coordinator, Emilio Science Program and Research Development Manager from West Texas Regional Poison Center, staff members from Aliviane Prevention Resource Center, Advocates for Prevention Coalition Rural Border Initiative and Border Prevention Program, and Officer Mike Banaray, Socorro ISD Police Services. But Chief, Travis, and all the guests that are here today, you hear a lot that perhaps the fight on these drugs is a losing battle, but it really isn't. I remember my law enforcement career that spanned 30 years, that we know what we don't prevent. I could tell you how many murders we had, how many accidents we've had, but what I couldn't tell you is what we have prevented. I mean, there are thousands of kids here, young people, and people that have matured that were never touched by the drug issue because of law enforcement intervention. They will never know that, or perhaps they do some do. But in my opinion, whether it's one person or thousands of people that have been saved by the efforts of law enforcement, it's well worth it, and we can't give up. You see these red ribbon week in some fences by schools, and you hear all this. It makes, it really makes a difference, and I appreciate you all being here and really helping us send that message. Joanne, thank you for speaking, all of you for being here today, because we're saving a lot of lives, making a huge difference in our community. So thank you. Travis?
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Court, Your Honor. You're absolutely right, Chief. We're overwhelmed with the THC content of the marijuana that's on the streets today. When 25, 30 years ago, when you and I were fighting it, it was 10 and 12, 14%. It's now 30 and 40%. It's a hard drug, and we're really concerned about the availability of it across the line in Mexico and soon to be across the line in New Mexico. So we're trying to aware our children and our youth of the fact that it's serious and it can ruin your life if you're arrested with it, if you get hooked on it. So we're doing the best we can. We're out there trying, and as you can see with all the law enforcement agencies and the prevention people together, we've married up here several years ago. We work together, we don't work against each other, and, you know, it's all for the betterment of the community, and that's what we're here for. And we thank you so very much for this resolution, and we thank you for your support of the HIDA program and all law enforcement and all prevention people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Travis, and I need to thank you again because so many of those HIDA grants come through here, and we approve them for the judge's signature, that it's sort of routine, but such a huge impact that the feds send so much, so many resources here to this region to help us with that fight. So thank you all for spending your morning with us.
I'd like to thank you. It just means a lot to all of us. I think there's two things that we are recognized for in El Paso, that we've been very successful, you know, all the agencies coming together. One of them is collaboration, and I think we've always had accolades about how we come together. And when I hear the partnership and who's involved in our legal department and everyone else coming together, I don't think it will be a losing battle. And also, the other one that's extremely important that we've learned through the pandemic is the ability to anticipate what's taking place. Although we're already in a very difficult situation, you're also anticipating the collateral impacts like the pandemic and the fact that people are going to go through some huge mental health challenges. We're already seeing the crime coming up, we're seeing gangs getting together, and of course, what happens when that all comes together? It's the drugs, right? The drugs become either to deal with your situation or to be part of, you know, of merchandising. So we thank you so much, the awareness to us as a mental health professional and having been a juvenile probation officer and worked a lot with children, I can tell you that if you prevent that turnaround to a bad situation, you know, I had a personal situation when my nieces was involved in that very young age, at 16-years-old course, to get the drugs into El Paso, and I had to go through this whole situation, all the way to being in prison away from here. And this is, I can tell you, incredibly smart, young lady going in the right direction, took that little turn. And I think that the parents realize that you cannot overcommunicate. You cannot overcommunicate with your children about what can happen, what not to do, and get them to understand the danger in that. Because I think most parents think that, my kid's doing well, you know, I don't have to worry. Every single person should worry because it's too much, there's too much of a situation right now for us not to worry. If you have a child, you have someone, just have that talk, have that discussion, and get them to understand before it happens. We know in mental health that if you're able to have a dialogue to challenge someone telling you something, if you don't have anything to say, you'll get caught in it. If you already have a dialogue that says, no, I already understand this, I'm not going to do it, and I've gone through it and I process it in my head, it's going to be much better for any child to be in that situation. Peer pressure is one of the most difficult things for our children, and you have to teach them how not to address some of the things or get caught up in the middle of this. So as a mental health professional in the past, I thank you. We have some challenges coming up from the pandemic, and just having these individuals here makes me feel a lot better that we are going to be able to address those challenges. So thank you very much, really appreciate the resolution, Commissioner. Amazing resolution, very timely. Thank you.
Thank you for those good words, and that, you can see what we're doing with the billboards and with the other posters and things we're doing. That is a peer-to-peer influence that we're trying to create, and it's working very well. So please watch for the billboards, they'll be coming up here hopefully this week. There's four of them that are electronic, and there's 10 of them that are the normal standard thing. But those are the posters that kids submitted themselves. They were written and drawn up and imagined by the youth of our school system throughout the El Paso County. So this is a peer-to-peer program, and we're supporting it from our side of it. But you're absolutely right, you know, the peer pressure is the most powerful thing that they see. They love parents and they listen to parents, but they do what the kids do. So thank you for those words, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Travis? Joanne, thank you. Thank you for saying a few words.
Item 5B, approve and adopt a resolution renaming the El Paso County Courthouse as Enrique Moreno County Courthouse in El Paso County, Texas.
Commissioner Robinson?
Yes, Judge, thank you, Commissioners. Thank you very much. All those attendants, thank you. Those who are listening, thank you very much for this joyous occasion that we have endured. Cesar, I believe, is going to read the resolution. Then we'll talk about what happened and how we go forward.
Cesar?
Thank you, sir. On behalf of Commissioner Robinson, Cesar Nava from the County Administration Department, I'll be reading in this resolution for the Commissioner. Whereas on August 10, 2020, a motion was brought forward by Commissioner Carl L. Robinson to rename the county courthouse after Mr. Enrique Moreno. The motion was seconded by Judge Ricardo Sanmaniego and then voted on unanimously by the Commissioners' Court. And whereas, a committee was formed by the people closest to him in order to bring together a renaming ceremony that would honor Mr. Moreno's life and legacy. And whereas, the committee members are Commissioner Carl L. Robinson, Honorable Linda Chu, Honorable Sylvester Reyes, Jaime Esparza, Bob Wingo, Honorable Lily Limón, Harlem Sizbais, Olga Hakes, Veronica Sintrón, Lisette Ardidi, Mayela Mejía, Robin Sully, Ramon Bracamontes, Rosa Moreno, Fermina Costa. And whereas, the committee members came together with the intention of recognizing the life of Enrique Moreno and the works of a man of dignity, honor, and faith. And whereas Enrique Moreno was born of humble beginnings. And upon his graduation from Austin High School, Enrique attained his undergraduate degree from Harvard University and his law degree from Harvard Law School. And whereas, Mr. Moreno was nominated in 1999 by President Bill Clinton for a judgeship on the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals, the first El Paso to be so honored. He received unanimously the highest rating given judicial nominees by the American Bar Association. President Clinton renominated him to the Fifth Circuit Court on January 3, 2001. Practicing in the areas of employment law and civil rights, he was consistently rated by state judges as one of the top three trial attorneys in El Paso. Throughout his career, he was listed by Woodward White as one of the best lawyers in America, among the winningest firms in the United States by the National Law Journal, as a Texas Super Lawyer by Texas Monthly, among the top lawyers in El Paso by the El Paso Herald Post Survey of State Judges, and as Lawyer of the Year by the Mexican-American Bar Association of El Paso. He also received the Albert Armandari Senior Lifetime Achievement Award from the Mexican-American Bar Association. Enrique was a founding member and past president of the George A. McAlmond American Inn of Court. He also served as Abogado Consultor del Gobierno de México. And whereas, Mr. Moreno's charity knew no boundaries. He represented clients at no cost and was known for winning large cases in the name of civil rights and returning his monetary part to those in need. And whereas, those who knew and loved him, knew him as the Abogado del Pueblo. And whereas, the El Paso County Courthouse is now honored by the name of a giant of the people, and now therefore be it resolved by the El Paso County Judging Commissioners' Court, that October 27, 2021, be known as Enrique Moreno County Courthouse. Signed this first day of November, 2021.
Second?
Commissioner Olgi?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Judge, with your indulgence, we have a couple of things we want to do in recognition of the members of the committee that made all this happen. So, we have the certificate. Ms. Betsy, you going to help us? If you bear with us for a moment. Is that? Or did he? What we're presenting to each of the members of the committee is a certificate of appreciation, a flag, and another small gift with the help of our County Administrator, Ms. Betsy Keller.
Ramon Bracamontes from County Administration. The flags were flown over the Enrique Moreno County Courthouse. We started bringing them down on Thursday, Friday, and over the weekend. So, every one of them was flown as of Wednesday to today.
Ms. Olga? Olga Hakes? Judge Linda Chu. Come on down. I'll tell you that if you have not seen the artifacts, if you come on the first floor, the book. If you haven't seen it, you go see it and read it. It was all instrumental of Judge Chu. It's wonderful. The words on the poem on the book on the first floor, go read it if you have not seen it. Thank you very much. Thank you. Veronica Reyes Sintrón. Honorable Lily Limón. I'll tell you that Lily was the quarterback. That's right.
Thank you, Lily.
Fermin, are you awake?
He, Fermin. Just a second, Fermin. Thank you, Fermin.
Ayala Mejía?
Thank you, Mayla.
Carla? Carla was one of the members of the committee that not only donated her time on the committee, but she also donated some of her resources. So, I would say, I always say, your time, your talent, and your tangibles. Carla was one of those individuals that donated her time, her talent, and her tangibles.
Thank you, Carla.
Ramon Bracamontes. Ramon is a staff member, but he also donated considerable amount of his time and talent to make sure that everything went well to detail. And if you look at some of the details of things that as far as this project, a lot had to do with Ramon, among others.
Man behind the scene. Thank you, Ramon. Wait, wait.
Robert, Bob, Wingo. Are you Bob? Okay, we'll get him later. What we'd like to do is that there was a lot to go, project to make it happen. We started over a year ago discussing how we're going to do it, what we're going to do, when we would be funding from. And I will say that one of the, among others, we had a lot of individuals that donated to this project. But one individual and organization that was very instrumental in making this happen is for it was the El Paso Community Foundation. They made a commitment that the first $25,000 that we raised, they would match it. Once we hit that mark, they did not hesitate to bring us a check. So, Mr. Eric Pearson, are you here? Here? Yes, very amazing. In fact, they made commitments to do some other things to help us along with a couple of the projects that we got in the wings as well. I need to have someone, Lily? Why don't you come and talk about the project? Wait, before you do that, Lily, Robin Sully? Not here today? Well, let me speak of Robin. Robin works, he's a staff member, but he, I don't know how many hours and days that he, on his personal time, helped out with this project. But as far as he, he's our facilities director. But he made sure that, and he did so much coordination with the artists that did the sculptures. I mean, days, hours, and days, the time that he spent to make sure that everything went down to detail. And he would call me and says, Commissioner, we got to do this. I said, oh. And there was not a time when he made a suggestion or recommendation that was, he was always on point, in other words. He thought it out before he brought it to me or called me or whatever. I don't know, I'm lost for words for it. His contribution was instrumental in making all this happen. As well as others that was just not here today, Congressman Sylvester Reyes was a key person on the committee. We started out on this project as far as who we have come to be our keynote speaker. And I consulted Congressman Reyes. And we had former, past president, Bill Clinton. We reached out to him on several occasions to see if we could get him to come. But because of his health and other issues, finally, he was not able to come. So, then our next person that we had on this was our current Secretary of Health and Human Services. Congressman Reyes reached out to him in that regard. And because of commitments and political reasons, he was not able to come. So, then we said, well, who can we reach out to come to be our keynote speaker? Someone that could speak very well about Enrique. So, I reached out to former district attorney, who's not here today. I'm sorry, he's not, Jaime Esparza. And then I reached out to, as well as Judge Linda Chu. And she said, well, there's a person that was a mentor for- And she said, well, there's a person that was a mentor for Enrique that would do us well, and his name was Judge Royal Ferguson. I called Judge Ferguson without hesitation. Said, wow, I'd be honored, I'm honored that you even made the call for me to come. And for Enrique, I would not hesitate. Yes, I'll be there. You just tell me where and when I'd be here, and I'll be there. So we backed him the information that he needed to do his speech. He came, presented, and he was very appreciative of the fact that we thought of him at light. He felt that there were other people that would be more deserving to speak than myself. But Lily, come talk.
This one, this mic. Good morning, Judge, Commissioners, Lily Limon, member of the Enrique Moreno Dedication Committee. There is no other committee that I have ever served on that brought me more pride and joy than serving on this committee. Enrique was a friend. He was a mentor to me. He was almost like my brother. I comment that in all the years that I worked with Enrique on a variety of projects, not once did he and I have a cross word for either one of us, for him, for me. He was an incredible leader, a humble man, humble to the core. I think that today he is hiding in some corner in heaven, thinking, why are they doing all of this for me? At the reception last week, an amazing little young boy that I love dearly, Diego, he reached over to his father and he said, Dad, is all of this for Enrique? And he said, yes. He said, all of this, like the courthouse and this reception and the music, all of this is for Enrique? And he says, yes. And Diego says, it's not enough. We need to name the state of Texas Enrique Moreno. So I can share with you that the pride is deeply rooted in our community. And thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Judge, and Commissioners, for making this a reality for our dear, dear friend Enrique Moreno.
And I would be remiss if I didn't call on Ms. Carla.
Carla Monsis Vice. Enrique Moreno was without any question the love of my life. And I was the love of his too. And I have nothing but appreciation for all of you, all the members of the committee, for everything that you did to acknowledge the life and achievements of such a beautiful, selfless person who meant so much to this community. I've heard it written about him, that he was a person whose talents and generosity and selflessness would be unequaled in our lifetimes. I believe that is true. Thank you. Thank you.
Carla, thank you very much for those words.
And last but not least, someone who was with Enrique on a professional level over 27 years. Olga.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Olga Hakes. I was blessed and honored to work with, beside Enrique for over 27 years. And there is no greater honor than being able to work with such a brilliant, amazing, kind, humble man. He was not only my boss, he was my friend and like a brother to me. And Enrique stood for the law, stood for the voiceless, and I loved working beside him, helping people, representing the indigent, representing the voiceless, and helping victims. And there are no words that could express my gratitude to him for being such a wonderful person. And this is such an honor to have this courthouse named after him. Enrique is what honor and dignity and warrior is all about. Thank you so much. I'm sure I'm going to forget something that I would have loved to say, but thank you so much.
Olga, thank you very much. Thank you.
Judge, can we have, well, let's, all the committee members come on down, come up front, please.
Commissioner, I have something from Mr. Moreno that I'd like to read further, if you don't mind. You know, it's been one of the most impressive, watching the committee, but watching the family and, you know, Olga and, you know, it's just amazing that they're trying to project as much as they can, this love and the caring, and then we try to make it more tangible and, you know, and it's this courthouse, and that'll really help everyone, because everybody that knew him, you know, you try to figure out, what can I say, what can I do? But just honoring and knowing that this courthouse was named after this incredible man, I think it helps all of us. But this is a, something very dear and close to me, and this is from the dad. Judge Samaniego, if you may, please read the following to the rest of the commissioners, which is a segment of the message that my father wanted to deliver. It is said that there is no bigger pain in life than the loss of a child. There's not enough money in this world that will ever replace my Enriqueito. However, the renaming of this courthouse honoring my Enriqueito is priceless. Judge Samaniego and Commissioners, you have truly touched my heart. I do not know how I can ever thank you enough. So on behalf of myself and the rest of the Moreno family, les mandamos un fuerte abrazo, muchas bendiciones y mil gracias. Thank you so much. Stay safe. May God bless all of you. Respectfully, Manuel Moreno Senior and the entire Moreno family. So, thank you for that. And it's just difficult, I guess, for all of us, because it's true about losing a child, but the way he has dealt with it, his dignity, and, I mean, I feel like I know why Enrique is like Enrique, because of the dad. I mean, when you see that, you see all the answer. And then finally, I also have the honor of presenting to Commissioner Robinson, the same thing that you all received, and the flag and, you know, the certificate of appreciation. But we want to thank you because you kept driving this, you know, we kept driving and driving this, and it was very well received, you know, those like myself that knew him a little bit of time, and then those like Commissioner Leon that, I mean, had just a tremendous, close relationship. And, you know, just knowing that it was being done properly, sort of crossing our fingers, making sure that everything, but there was, to me, it was beyond my expectation, Commissioner, that it got to this level, and that it'll be so appreciated and so professionally done. There's nothing that we would ever, ever have to worry that we hadn't done enough, because I think we've done enough. But now, what is the important thing is the impact it has on our young people that think about, you know, we all need, especially now, we talked about earlier this morning, we so much need role models. I mean, the role models are hard to come by, and he left a huge vacuum. But I think that, you know, learning about him and getting people to come and understand who he was at an early age, I mean, and the young man is right, Diego was right, I mean, I wish we could put him in all our textbook and our curriculums to help the children understand that everything is possible if you have that heart that he has, and we'll have it, it's just a matter of making that heart become more tangible and do the things that he did to our community. So very much appreciated, Commissioner Robinson, for leading the committee and everything you did to make it happen. Thank you.
Well, Judge, I could not have done it without the help and support of the staff, your support as far as the county judge and the commissioners. So those who are watching, those who are listening, you come down to the County Courthouse on the first floor, you'll see the Book of Knowledge as you walk in, see the name on the building. Come to the third floor, you'll see a bookcase with the artifacts from Enrique, from his achievements and recognitions, but you'll see the statue. So Enrique will be guarding this building day and night. He's not leaving. He'll be here for celebration. And if you go up to the 12th floor, you also see a bust of Enrique. So Enrique's all over this building, from the outside to the inside, entrance and exit. So Enrique Moreno will live with us forever and ever.
Item 5C, approve and adopt a resolution honoring all veterans on Veterans Day.
Yes. See, I believe we have a couple people here, Mr. Tony Lewis, I believe. Veterans Day. It comes every year, on 11th day of 11th month, we celebrate Veterans Day. Cesar, are you prepared? Are you ready?
Yes, sir.
If you'll read the resolution, please.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Cesar Navarro with the County Administration Department, I'll be reading this resolution in for Commissioner Robinson. Whereas Veterans Day occurs on November 11th every year in the United States, in honor of the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month of 1918, that signaled the end of World War I, known as Armistice Day. And whereas Veterans Day commemorates veterans of all wars, living or dead, and whereas the military men and women who serve and protect the United States from all walks of life, they are parents, children, grandparents, friends, neighbors, and coworkers, and are an important part of their communities. And whereas 18.2 million living veterans served during at least one war as of 2018, 9% of veterans are women. 7 million veterans served during the Vietnam War. 3 million veterans have served in support of the War on Terrorism. Of the 16 million Americans who served during World War II, about 325,000 were still alive as of 2020. 2 million veterans served during the Korean War. And whereas El Paso veterans commemorate Veterans Day with festivities and parades. And whereas there are parades throughout the entire El Paso County, from Downtown Veterans Parade, Northeast Veterans Parade, Saban's Veterans Parade, and San Elizario Veterans Parade. And whereas the County Commissioners Court unanimously voted to allot $50,000 to assist the parades with their expenses. And whereas Commissioner Carl L. Robinson will be the Grand Marshal of the 2021 Downtown Veterans Parade. And Judge Ricardo Samaniego will be the Grand Marshal of the San Elizario Veterans Parade. Now therefore be it resolved by the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court that November 11th, 2021, be known as Veterans Day in El Paso County. Sign this first day of November, 2021.
You see there. Second.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Judge, we have a couple people here that just speak on this resolution and Veterans Day parade, so Tony Lewis? And your sidekick?
I'll him, uh, on Thursday, because Dan Webb here is so instrumental in what he does, retired veteran, and heading our parade. He gets out there and plays all the Simon Says with the kids at our food truck deals and gets everybody going and tells them what to do, and it's, so we've been, his name is kind of stuck as Simon Says, you know, so.
Thank you.
But anyhow, thank you, good morning. Honorable Judge Samaniego, Commissioners, Commissioners Court, thank you on this beautiful day. Honorable Carl Robinson, thank you, thank you for what you have been doing for the Northeast County, for the city of El Paso. You are a truly great veteran, truly a great man, and I applaud you and thank you for what you have proposed to help our city and county in our parades. It's been essential that we do this, because we also are bringing Fort Bliss closer to us in what we are doing. To hold these parades in different parts of the city, some on the 6th, ours will be on the 11th, is so much needed. I remember as a kid, going to some parades, or going to the rodeos, remember when they used to have parades for the rodeos and stuff like that? And kids growing up need that. It brings them closer to what we were and what we are and what we need to be. We need to bring our hearts and our kids closer, these parades do this, especially for veterans. A lot of kids, kids growing up, don't really know what a veteran is. One of the things I just thought I'd share, I was thinking about while I was sitting down, when my dad came back from World War II, he had a friend, I never met him, his name was Danny, and he used to talk about their times and black and white pictures. And Danny gave him a gift, which I've never And Danny gave him a gift, which I've never seen in any other places, of seven books of World War II. You know how the photographers and all the journalists would follow the wars? These were seven different books in different theaters of the war, all in black and white, all journalist writings. And when you look at those, when I was a kid, I'd open them up and I didn't quite understand at the time. But as I grew older, I would always go through the, share in my mind, share it with my kids, and I would have them read the different theaters of the war. All original photography in the Pacific, in the different wars. You actually, these books are about that thick, capture each theater of the war. You all need to be more instrumental, trying to help us push into the school systems and not just make it a one-day affair. What these books, like what I read, what my kids read with us. Still have, my dad passed and he dedicated, gave me the books. We have lost a lot of that. So we need to keep going, and this is where these parades, I thank you for what you all are doing, because this is going to be very beneficial. And as the years to come and the following year, we will be more prepared to do bigger things with the parades because we will have some funding. The funding will help us this year. We are doing different things with it. And as you all know now, we have our 180-foot flagpole back up. So people are, going to our parade in Northeast. Jimmy Melver will be our Grand Marshal this year. And I believe we have quite a bit more entries already coming in. And thank you all. Thank you for what you do out here. Keep up the good work. We applaud you, Carl Robinson. Thank you so much. I'm going to let Dan Webb say a few words about the parade. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Great words. Thank you.
Judge, Commissioners, thank you. Thank you once again on behalf of Flags Across America for allowing us to be present today. We are subject to have our, we're scheduled to have our Veterans Parade on November 11th, as you may know, starting at 10 o'clock, taking place from Hondo Pass to the Flag Site, Old Glory Memorial Flag Site. This year, the parade is scheduled to be one of the largest Veterans Parade in Northeast from the entrance that we have already received. So we're getting, we got a big response this year and continuing to get a big response. And we would take entrance all the way up until that date, all the way up to that date. We certainly appreciate the support that you guys have offered us this year. We definitely need the funding. As you know, that site is operated on a strictly, on a donation basis. All of the volunteers are great people out there, veterans that help us on a volunteer basis. Without them, we can't survive. Fort Bliss is going to be involved in this parade as well. They're going to be carrying our 30-by-60 flag with a 50-man carry up to the flagpole, at which time we will have a brief flag dedication. And that dedication, we will raise the, we will raise the 50-by-100, and if you've never seen it, rather than want to come out, 50-by-100 flag on that flagpole. If you haven't never been out to the Old Glory Memorial Site, I invite you to come out. It is something to see. It is something to see. We in Northeast, we take pride in our veteran community, as you may well know. So thank you again for allowing us to be here this morning.
Thank you both. Commissioner Robinson, back to you.
Yes, we have a couple people on line, I believe. We have County Veterans Assistance Officer, Mr. Carl Dwyer, I believe he's on the line. And also, we have Mr. Gus Rodriguez, the civilian aide to the Secretary of the Army.
Excellent.
Carl, are you there?
Go ahead, Carl.
Yes, I'm here. Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, perfect.
All right. Well, good morning, County Judge and County Commissioners. First of all, as everyone has already said, I want to thank you all for not only this resolution, but everything that you put into your actions to support El Paso County veterans. So we really want to thank you for that. I didn't want to run over the four parades and at least give the start time so the public, mainly for the public interest, as we approach Veterans Day next Thursday. The San Eli Parade is on the 6th of November and it starts at 9:00 a.m. The El Paso City Parade is also on the 6th of November and it starts at 10:00 a.m. The Fabens Parade is on the 10th of November and it starts at 10:00 a.m. And as already mentioned, the Northeast Veterans Parade is on the 11th, actual Veterans Day at 10:00 a.m. Couple other events that I wanted to highlight on the, we actually start celebrating this week on the 4th of November, this Thursday at 10:00 a.m. at Bel Air High School. We'll kick off the County Veterans Day ceremonies with the annual celebration at Bel Air High School. So we invite all to come out to that to support if you can. That's the 4th of November at 10:00 a.m. And this Saturday, we will continue to show support for our county veteran caregivers with a caregiver drive-through event, and it will be running concurrently with the City Parade and the San Eli Parade. So once you leave the parades, please come over to the Veteran One Stop at Deanna, especially for the veteran caregivers. We'll have tons of resources, many community organizations out with their pavilions and their tables set up with resources for veterans. So once again, we just continue to try to do as much as we can to put actions behind words. And like Mr. Lewis said, you know, we really thank you for the resources, your time, your talents, and your resources to steal Commissioner Robinson's plug. We really appreciate the funds that you have put. We hope that this will enable us to do bigger and better in the years to come. This is just a start, so we look forward to hopefully an annual commitment to where we can lean forward next year and actually start planning a little bit earlier and sooner and make sure these resources are well-spent and back up veterans. So once again, from the El Paso County Office, Veterans Office, where every day is Veterans Day, I want to thank you for everything you do to support us.
Thank you, Carl. Appreciate that.
And Mr. Gus Rodriguez, I believe. Gus, are you on the line?
Yes, I am, Commissioner. Can you hear me?
Welcome, Gus. Yes, we can.
Judge, thank you. County Judge, members of the court, and Gus Rodriguez, it's my honor to support this resolution presented by Commissioner Robinson and supported by the court. Throughout the history of our county, citizens from El Paso County have taken the oath to support and defend our Constitution. Their service has allowed us to be here today exercising our freedom, to enjoy the liberty of our democracy. This court has always supported and honored the service of our citizens, but most important, we have recognized the ultimate sacrifice made by so many El Paso County citizens that have offered their life in the defense of this nation. As we prepare to celebrate Veterans Day, this resolution speaks to every veteran to say that the county of El Paso and its elected officials recognizes and honors their service. Thank you for this opportunity to speak in support of this resolution.
Thank you very much, Gus. And thank you, as mentioned earlier, that, you know, relationship with Fort Bliss and how important that is. And obviously, no one better has a liaison between our community and Fort Bliss and introducing us to the key people there. Gus, thank you for that, you and your team. Very much appreciated.
Thank you, sir.
As we conclude, need to add one more thing to the list of things that's going to be happening in regards to Veterans Day. Golden Corral did not provide to you this token of appreciation last year because of the pandemic, but Golden Corral throughout El Paso will provide a free meal to all veterans on Veterans Day, November 11th, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. here in El Paso, El Paso County. So any and all veterans are eligible and encouraged to come out to Golden Corral from 5:00 to 9:00 and receive a meal on behalf of Golden Corral. This is not only a program locally, but it's a national program that Golden Corral nationally provides this service to our veterans throughout the nation.
Thank you. Commissioner Robinson, thank you for that, and I appreciate all the different organizations and trying to do something on that day. I can't promote, but there's this haircut place that gives free haircuts to every single veteran. But it's more of coming from the heart that they're served in their proper way. But it's starting to, you know, it's getting close to this, like the way it should be. And thank you, Commissioner Robinson, on the parade. And I get this feeling like for the first time, it's getting to the point that's deserving of El Paso because we have such amazing veterans, you know, and I thank you for everything that's happening to get to that point. We're driving this idea of El Paso being the veterans' capital of the U.S., and we do so much and we need to do so much more. But all these things are building up to one day being able to recognize as that community that cares about veterans, is ready for veterans, and that one day that we will be recognized as, you know, veterans' capital of the U.S. And I'm sure Commissioner Robinson and Gus and others are going to help me try to get that across. It all started with the wall of, how do we just capture, you know, let's get this momentum going, that capture. It was a little bitty, tiny kind of contribution, but I think hopefully that there's a lot of respect for our veterans and honor them the way they should be honored. And Commissioner Robinson, you're going to welcome, welcome home.
Welcome home.
I didn't want to steal his line, so I want him to say, it comes out better when Commissioner Robinson says.
One thing that in regards to veterans and Veterans Day, that we, you took the lead on the wall we have as far as the Veterans of the Year, so you want to talk about that?
Yeah, we're very proud that we're honoring the Veteran of the Year, and this is a veteran who, military-wise, you know, has done great things, but also the community. And I've always said that, you know, nothing better than a veteran deciding to that sort of urge to, you know, they're willing to put their life for our country and they're willing to put all their energy for our community. And so we were going to honor the Veteran of the Year, and I want it to be something very special and that we recognize it in the most proper way. So thank you for reminding me about that. So we thank you for that as well as one of the initiatives for our veterans' community. The one at Bel Air is also, it's an amazing event. They're all amazing, but I've gone a couple of times to the one at Bel Air and the number of people that are out there and the excitement around that. And this will be Thursday, I believe, right? And so I'm very excited. That's like the kickoff for all the other things that happen. I'd like to thank Linda Mays because she, somehow she's involved in everything, you know, and really appreciate that. But all the veterans, everyone is trying to make this thing happen. Thank you very much. And Commissioner Robinson, thank you for bringing this to the forefront and that we make it happen in a very deserving way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'd like to leave you just a couple wonderful lines.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Item number six is public comment. At this time, we do not have any speakers signed up for public comment. We will take no action for item six. Item number seven, Commissioners Court, discuss and take appropriate action regarding El Paso County's concessionaire service to help boost economic development at Escarate Park in downtown El Paso.
Well, thank you. I just, I didn't lose my minuscule. Do you, Miguel, if you could sort of play some pictures here because I wanted sort of to put it in the right perspective? And this is for our public. So I'll start off by saying, you know, we've had a great contract with Primus and it's coming to an end, but also very thankful for them and their efforts and everything that they've done. So we'd like to recognize that they've really helped, you know, trying to bring this into the right perspective. And so secondly, you know, we, you know, we've seen how important the outdoors is, you know, we've seen how important we're doing things for our community. We've been serving, it's been, you know, Escarate is the hub and will continue to be very important. We're saying that maybe the hub or a Central Park kind of, people will realize that it's a, at that level of a Central Park. We need to take action, you know, golfers, or bicyclists, or runners, I mean, it highlights, we have the Marathon Paso de Norte Trail, a lot of things are coming into play for this outstanding park. And so in order to do that, we have to also discuss, you know, these facilities. We have one here at the courthouse, obviously, there's a concession here, and one at Escarate. And I think that one of the things that I'm really pushing, and I know Commissioner Stout as well, is that we have to match the idea of where we're headed, not where we are. And we need a partner to have that concession at such a level that we know that it'll lead us in. I mean, we could easily take someone that is going to be where we're at, or we can look for a concession that really projects and is in alignment and is capable as well. I mean, we know that it takes capital and it takes money to stay, and I don't want that concession to ever sort of fall behind and it's not at the level, and then we sort of have to figure out how to bring that up to our level. I think it's going to be a partnership where they're helping us to be successful and we're helping them to be successful. And I think, you know, we've sort of been saying that we need to dream big. I know, but Anika and, you know, their work, their team and everyone that works there, their way of thinking is big. I mean, they want the best for our park, and I think that's helped. And I think we've shown that the bigger we think, the better we do things, as we know with the, we're going to be talking about the Marquee, the thanks to Commissioner Leon, and that sort of highlights it as well, that it's not a hidden gem, but we're beginning to promote it. And so I've asked Mr. Joe Lopez to be here and also, and talk a little bit about the contract, because what we don't want to do is that we want to, we don't want to fall short of a situation where, you know, you know, we're trying to do something, but then we don't want any gap. So if you could do that, and then I'll ask some of the other speakers to do that as well. But Mr. Lopez, talk a little bit about the contract with Primus and what that entitles and what we need to do at this time.
Good morning, Joe Lopez, El Paso County Purchasing Agent, for the record. Really, right now, we are out to bid for the concession contract for the lower level of the courthouse. We do not have any vendor in place right now. The contract has lapsed, and we are working on solutions and taking care of some short-term solutions to make sure the jurors are getting fed and that we are maintaining what services we need to for the county. As far as the golf course, the golf course, we need to pay close attention to because I believe that contract is expiring in mid-December, and we don't want to be without a contract with that vendor. That's a key part of the golf course. It's not only a revenue generating, but it's also a social place, a social gathering, there's networking going on, and it's just a place for a family and people to get together. And so that one is going to be lapsing very soon, so we need to move forward on that. We are currently out on solicitation for the concessions here. I believe we need to redo the lower level because of no response. I believe we need to redo the lower level because of no responses that were viable. We did get one response and it was basically a gentleman who sent the name of his restaurant and a copy of his menu without any form signed, without any type of contract, without any type of information that we required. The hardest part about these contracts is getting a viable partner. We do need to partner, I think you're correct, Judge, that we need to work that the county succeeds and the vendor. When we first opened the courthouse, what I like to call the new courthouse because I've been here forever, that was built probably 30 years ago, we had a concession contract. It was Solexo Marriott and it was tied to not only the courthouse, but the congregate meals for the senior citizen centers and the homebound meals. And they took care of that and the concessions in the courthouse plus any type of catering and special functions and so forth. And that worked out well because Solexo not only serviced the county, but they also serviced the senior citizen program and did a lot of the cooking through our kitchen in the lower level. By whatever decisions back in that day, they took, they separated the senior citizen program from the cafeteria downstairs. And Solexo Marriott did not bid or renew their contract because basically financially it wasn't really worth it to accompany their size. They were able to augment their services for the county by utilizing the larger contract, which was the congregate meals. And so we tried, when we bid the first time, we had some very good vendors bid. I don't think anybody remembers, but actually Delicious Mexican Food was in the basement for a brief period of time. Also Tommy's Barbecue, which is now no longer open, Tommy retired before I did, he bid on it. But the problem is, is although it's a lot for us to maintain a separate restaurant in the courthouse, wasn't as viable. And for what we were asking, and the term of the contract probably wasn't advantageous. After a short period of time, Delicious asked not to be renewed on their contract because they were not making any money down here. Food was excellent, service was excellent, but they were having trouble just breaking even. Tommy's decided it probably wouldn't be a viable solution for them. Because you really, you have a captured audience of jurors with a cap on what they spend that we're paying for. And also to become a venue for the rest of downtown, having to go out to lunch, get through security, go down to the basement, and then to be in line with jurors and everybody else, wasn't so advantageous. So we really do need to rethink how we do, excuse me, my allergies, really how we redo this bid. Golf course, pretty much kind of the same thing because again, although it's a nice solution for us and for the golfers, it's hard to make it a lunch venue when you have to go into the park around the lake and then go in there. And so we need to be more open to how we address this and how we become a partner with these vendors and maybe a more long-term contract. I've been around forever. I've gone through the solicitations, I think five, of privatizing the golf course. And we had some great responses. We had Jack Nicholas's company give us a response. We had Arnold Palmer, Greg Norman, quite a few. The USGA and the PGA was part of our team. But the problem was, was what we wanted and the term of our contract, nobody was gonna put that much money in without a long-term contract to recoup their money. Now, this isn't as prevalent in this, but we do need to work with our vendors and maybe what we do the same specifications. We're looking to serve our jurors. We're looking to stay open during the golfing hours. You must provide these things. And maybe we need to see from our vendors, maybe have a pre-bidders conference or something else that we can find out from the businesses in the area, what would make this a viable solution to both them and the county? Because right now, we have a lot of interest. We've had people come in from different sports bars and restaurants, and yet after reviewing everything, they don't bid. And I think that's where our problem is. But we do really need to focus on a solution, even if it's short-term, to take care of that golf course. We're trying to forge ahead with the cafeteria. I really am not involved in the whole specs and what's best for us, but I can tell you that contract's gonna be dead in December. And without a vendor, you're not gonna have the 19th hole to serve people food, to serve adult beverages, which sometimes is a big part of the golf. I know when I golf, because that's what makes me look better as a golfer. So that's really where we are right now.
Well, no, Joe, I want to thank you for that. And I know we're under the gun and, you know, it's a little close, but I was thinking of, well, two things that I think would be important, and that would be that we form a committee very quickly with you on it so that you get that information as to what are some of the expectations. I think we do have to look at perhaps, and these are just brainstorming until we get down to the nitty-gritty, and that is that maybe brainstorm the idea of subsidizing a little bit of it at the beginning, as in, you know, being able to get some, I've talked to very, you know, big name brand kind of restaurants and they're worried about the first six to seven months. They feel that they can make it work, but it's gonna be a huge cost on them. I've even said, look, look at it as a donation. You guys give incredible money out and maybe this could be sort of your contribution. So, but, you know, I've tried my best. I also learned that there's this company, SVN, that actually does all this work and they promote it and they're linked into every restaurants and even outside of the El Paso area, they're experts at it. So maybe if I can get you in touch with that organization, Joe, to see what do they offer? How much does it cost? You know, what are some of the ups and downs of doing that? And like I said, I know we're under the gun, but I think these are some ideas. You know, I've also, I don't want to throw this in, but I've talked to a lot, a lot of different people about the possibility of naming, Phil Martinez has been, federal judge, was an amazing man that was there every Saturday with his menudo, so everybody knows who he was. And the possibility of naming the, you know, the golf course after somebody as significant as him, to give it that kind of, you know, that level of pride of who we are. And like I said, this gentleman, if you walked in on a Saturday, he was there and you forgot he was a federal judge. And so some of, these are some of the ideas that I'm thinking about that we're gonna be working on. And I know, Joe, I don't know if you want to complete that. I wanted to hear from Veronica and also from an economic development perspective, from Michael as well. So anything else?
Well, Judge? I can tell you, having been around on the Delicious days down in the courthouse, it was the first six months to a year that really killed Delicious and made them not want to continue the contract because the whole startup and getting going, they were having trouble. They were basically bleeding money. So yeah, we do have to figure something out there. For us to move forward with the task force and to try and come up with a solution, I think we do need to find out what our scope of work is, what our goals are and our priorities, and maybe hit some milestones. And really, I think you have a great team with Michael and with Veronica and others.
Absolutely.
I'm not sure, and I'll certainly help in any capacity I can, but I need somebody to define our needs. I'm not familiar with the sales or the transient customers or anything else. So, and we can work on that. Again, we do need to come up, and again, it comes with maybe setting a scope and getting involved with legal. I know in discussions that Primos is not willing to extend the contract any further. So we really need to come up with a quick, short-term solution. I think the task force and moving forward to come up with a deal that will help everybody. Veronica's done a great job out at the sports park with, and really, I've got the two with the food trucks and everything. And really, we need to come up with more hybrid solutions. You're just not gonna get the older golfers out of the food truck, standing in line. But we need to come, we can come up with something that'll work for all of us, and I think it will work well. But I do want to just, and I'm sure Veronica would probably be better to address this, yeah, we have that window closing on the golf course concession that we really can't let shut because you will lose a lot of revenue.
Absolutely, absolutely. And like I said, I know we're coming close, but I just don't want that idea that if, you know, that we rush into it and then we're gonna live with our decision for a long time. So that's gonna be the balancing act of, you know, trying to understand the contract, but at the same time, you know, that we don't rush into it. So Veronica, if you want to go ahead, we've talked a little bit about some maybe transitional kinds of things. So you want to go ahead, Veronica?
Yes, good morning, Judge Commissioners Veronica Myers, Parks and Recreation Director. And yes, first of all, you know, as the judge mentioned, thank you to Primos Cafe. They've been amazing. We did have people coming into the park, paying the $2 to get into the park just to have their menudo as well. So they've done a great service. I want to thank them for that and thank them for extending their contract already. And an addendum for us to help us find lasting concessionaire. I do want to say that we have just a lot of exciting things happening at the golf course. This is one of the many, many opportunities that have been identified as well by our master plan for concessionaires that would provide services at the park as well, but also help our community. So we, I really like the way you all are talking about it and the way Mr. Lopez is talking about it, about a partnership. So it's not just about, you know, generating revenue, which is always great for the park. But again, it's about providing a service to our community in many ways. This is one of the opportunities is at the golf course, along with this, with the golf course is the sports park. And then we have a future one coming up, which is a Blue Guild, which is to provide concessions at the park around the lake. And we hope that it's somebody that can do as well, work with, make it like a tax shop and could provide fishing rods, rental of fishing rods. You could go up there and get your fishing license, rent, as Commissioner Leon has mentioned, you know, or you could rent bikes and scooters and different things from there. So it provides, we really are gonna be working with a lot more vendors to not just grow, provide services at the park, but create recreational opportunities for our community and really make this a central park. So I want to say that the golf course, you know, and I want to thank all the staff there, they have done an amazing job to turn that golf course around to make it one of the premier golf courses in El Paso. And we would have, had it not been for COVID last year, we would have broken the 50,000-plus rounds of golf at the golf course. We're already up at 46, which is like 10,000 more rounds of golf since I first got here back in 2018. So the staff has done an amazing job. Our golf pro, Mike Smith, Michael Smith, has been amazing. And Ben, of course, and his crew and the maintenance crew, they have done an amazing job of that. We invite the community, you know, to come out and see what we're doing, the difference that this court has supported and the administration to make a difference at Escarate Park. And there's just more exciting things coming. But the golf course is definitely, definitely busy. So we really hope that we can find a viable partner for these concessions. And this concession contract will expire December 5th. So we are working with Mr. Lopez and purchasing to find a temporary solution to serve our customers.
Thank you. Michael, you want to sort of, from an economic development standpoint, maybe from your vantage point?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners, Michael Hernandez, Economic Development Director. I'm glad to be with you to talk about this a little bit. I think it's important as the county is looking for short-form solutions to make sure that the concession does not lapse at Escarate Park. And we're also thinking about some longer-term solutions. And I really appreciate Mr. Lopez's point about getting a better understanding from the food and beverage industry, what they're looking for, what makes sense for them in terms of investing with us at county assets like the courthouse and the Scott at the Park, as well as the sports park. And I think it would actually serve us well to form a task force, meet with food and beverage industry folks, understand from them their perspective on what makes sense, what kind of margins they're looking for when they're looking to start up a new operation, and also think through how to market and publicize a new concessionaire at some of our places. I think, you know, you all, we've talked about the courthouse and some of the challenges there. I think a big part of that is people don't understand that there is a vendor in the basement of the courthouse. And so how do you make more public that there is a great restaurant at the courthouse? Let me get through those solutions. I think it makes sense for us to talk to industry, to listen to some of the local restaurateurs who have seen successes in different parts of El Paso, get some feedback from them and have some kind of event where we actually can showcase what those county assets would look like with their investment.
Excellent, thank you. So today, you know, the idea was more to sort of open our lens to that and, you know, I know we've talked about El Paso Community College. I know they're limited in how they can provide the service and the number of people and, you know, they have people that are leave school and so it's more, there could be a really great supportive role for them. And so that could be one, I know Commissioner Stout had mentioned that and looks from our little discussions, that they'd be a great supporting role, more so than sustaining it and, you know, keeping it because of all the things that happen and kids that graduate and all these other things that are difficult to maintain that level. But I think that's another possibility. But Michael, thank you for volunteering to hit that committee or task force that we discussed. And I'm kidding, Michael, you haven't volunteered, but I think it'd be great, you know, just because that would give us, you know, more of an outside view. I know Veronica would be an excellent partner. I know Commissioner Stout, myself, I mean, I think we'd be, but whatever we need to do, I think we need to do it quickly. But I think if we could find a temporary solution so that we don't feel that pressure of not getting the right concession there. So I think it's that balance that we've talked about. So that was the idea, just sort of bring it forward so you could begin to hear about it. I think that marquee was gonna, is gonna play a huge role in being able to let people know that if we get a name brand, people will come in. The ones that have been very successful, even Lone Star, I cannot tell you how many people go to Lone Star Restaurant on Tuesday for Taco Day and, you know, they've done better advertising, but you could go on a Saturday and about half of them, I know it's situated very differently, but about half of the people there are not from, are not golfers. And so I hear a lot of people going there. Butterfield also has a tendency, they get a lot of people from Fort Bliss and they get people that are non-golfers that eat there. And a lot of the venues, they combine the, from the quinceañeras to other things as part of their venue. And so I know Veronica and company, Tessa, are very good at creating that environment. I think we have the potential to have both the, you know, the venues. I think we have the potential to have both the, you know, the venues and then being able to cater to them, and maybe that would be attractive to the new person coming in. So I don't know. Betsy, do you have any additional comments that you might want to add so we could?
Thank you, Judge. I definitely think your idea of looking at a way to subsidize as an economic development proposal, because we know that, as has been identified, that the startup is the most difficult time. Getting a client-based, customer-based buildup is important. The temporary, someone there temporary is something we're going to need to work with legal to figure out how can we do that or other options. Even if it's the food trucks, the only problem is specifically at the golf course is the beverages that people like to consume. And so we can continue to work through what are our options and bring that back. Another option would be a temporary bidding or awarding it, something short-term. But we would have to be pretty flexible on those terms to be able to get someone to come in there for a short-term period.
Yeah, one of the other criterias is that remember that to get the beer and wine, it can be, it cannot be transferred from one to the other, so they have to apply, and that's about a 30-day process. I mean, there is a way to expedite it, but so that little idea of getting the beer and wine license at the same time also needs to be considered. I'm pretty sure that you cannot, I mean, this, I'm talking in my past experience, that you couldn't transfer from one location to the other, any beer or wine. You have to reapply, and it could take as much as 45 days. And so we've got to take that into consideration. And I mean, I just would love to participate. I do have background in restaurants and have owned some, and so maybe I could, in the task force, hopefully I could be helpful in some of the things that I saw that brings people in. Any additional comments or anything if not? Yes, Commissioner O'Ginn?
Judge, or maybe this is a question for Joe. How is it that we are getting the word out there to let potential concessionaires know that these opportunities exist? I know that in an item that came before the court just a couple of weeks ago, there was a list of local businesses that I think were notified when the request for proposals was out, the one that we just terminated. There was about, I don't know, maybe about 75 local restaurants, I guess, that received notice. But I know at least one of them that was on that list, I recognized right away that's been out of business for years and years and years. So I'm just wondering, besides that, how is it that we're getting the word out to let people know, to let businesses know that we're looking for vendors?
Well, what we do is we have a list of vendors that these restaurants, these caterers and concessioners will sign up and be a part of our vendor list, that they show interest in wanting to do business with the county on that and many other things. We have probably about 13,000 vendors on that list. The problem is, is we really don't have the personnel to check them all the time, and they don't update their information. Or the person who was pursuing the county is no longer with that company, or they closed down, and it just kind of got lost in the chain. We advertise our bids. I think this is probably one of the bids, and there's probably others we could do, where perhaps we did more outreach, maybe through public service, community board, you know, maybe something with the Restaurant Association or something like that. Because really, we rely on the list of vendors that come to us and say, we want to do business with the county. Because there are a lot of vendors that don't want to do business with the county. And that's really how we do it, and just through advertising, through our webpage, where we show that we're out to bid. Other than that, we really don't have any other resources for that.
So relying on the list, I guess, is what concerns me.
Yes, ma'am. I can't agree more. It really, I've learned that as a department, you have to go out there and scrub. I like, I find myself sometimes going to pass conferences for their list of vendors to find vendors that do whatever it is I'm trying to RFP. Otherwise, you don't get modern, best-of-the-best responses, companies that are modern, best-of-the-best. I do believe that vendor engagement is something that's on the purchasing's strategic plan to update and do more with their vendor list. But our vendor list is not extremely updated. And so we would have to go out and do the work or use like a consultant to tell us, here's where you should advertise, here's where you should be sending the RFP to help us with that.
Well, and I think at the very least, we should be engaging with the Restaurant Association. I know that there's a local Restaurant Association.
There is.
That has a lot of members. So I think at the very least, that would be a good place to start. I don't know if there's any funding that we could potentially allocate to, I don't know, in an ad in the newspaper. I mean, we're only a month away from losing the concessionaire at Ascarate. I think at this point, whatever we have to do to spread the word, we just have to do it.
Well, what we're working on right now, and really what, it's usually our end-user departments that give us suggestions because they're the ones in that industry. When we did the privatizing of the golf course, we advertised with the USGA, we advertised with the PGA, and through the Golf Association advertisements. And we were given funding from Commissioners Court to do that. We've done that for other things. We do a lot for when we're looking for directors and things like that. We are currently, in fact, you approved the renewal of the contract in consent. We are currently implementing and will be starting this fiscal year where our bids are going to be on a ion wave system where we're advertising our bids with all the entities also in El Paso County and throughout the country. So the vendor list has expanded quite a deal. And also, because this is a pooled bid platform, you have a lot more, shall we say, interested vendors from all over the country that are looking at our bids now. And that's hopefully going to get us a lot more response. That's part of our strategic plan. And we have partnered with the City of El Paso and the school districts, and this is where we're putting our bids. And it opens up to a lot more resources. And so we're working on that because everybody has their own system, and you just get either stagnant information or vendor complacency. They just don't update their information.
And I think this is where the task force can help because I do feel that, I don't see it beyond like impossible that someone that's doing another golf course somewhere else would be, might be, would be interested in doing the same here, not just necessarily in El Paso. Because that would be ideal if someone already knows how to do this, you know, and that's their business, it would be amazing to do that. But I mean, I still, but I think that task force would be good to be able to, like I've reached out to a lot and I've talked to them, they get pretty excited, but then I get busy, they get busy, and then I don't have the, you know, I haven't been able to follow up sometimes on that, on those contacts. So I think if we could help out and put a, you know, it could be, Michael, maybe you could suggest how to form the committee, maybe one from each commissioner, I mean, whatever it is that you feel you want to recommend, do that pretty quickly. And then we'll just start meeting, and this is a very important element of, you know, going forward. So I see it as at that level of commitment.
Judge, I've got a question.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Commissioner Stout.
Being realistic, we're probably not going to get somebody in there by December. I mean, I just don't think that it's going to happen. I'm not trying to like, you know, rain on anybody's parade, but I just think we need to be realistic that it's not going to happen by December. And so, I mean, obviously, we need to do as much as we can, but I guess, when did we first go out to bid for this, in August? And we just didn't find anybody? And so, do you remember, do you remember, Mr. Lopez, when we actually started?
I don't recall when's the last time that we've been trying to get somebody on this. I believe the biggest problem we have, because we have had interest in both venues really, is how to make money and the county requirement. That's why I say we need to get in discussion with the vendors to see, are we asking for something that inherently sets them up to fail in the beginning? But the hard part is getting a viable response for the county.
If I may, Commissioner, I'm pulling up when we've been out for bid on this, but I will say, just historically, over the last, my entire time here, we have gone out for bid, both on the courthouse, the sports park, the park, and we have struggled all along. Remember, we recall on the sports park, we really wanted to get a nice vendor for the upstairs, we wanted a vendor for the pro shop. We've just really struggled with attracting vendors. We've done some things to make improvements, such as our restaurant can now be accessed, if we wanted to set it up, it can now be accessed after hours without going through the courthouse. We added that emergency stairway down into the courtyard. We made major improvements to the courtyard so it could be, the restaurant could have a direct venue for special events after hours. There's a lot of things that we could do now to make this a more attractive venue. We do need to do some work to design the specs to attract, to do the outreach like you're talking about, Judge, and to find out what's needed to make it more attractive. I definitely think it's financial is going to be our biggest, what financial guarantees we can give somebody to come in here to set up.
And even... Are those incentives?
How do we do that, though? Like, how do we do that, though, legally?
Yes, sir.
Like, you know, because we're going to be going out to bid, but then we're going to say, oh, and if you bid on it, we may give you this, or like, how does that work?
The way it would work is similar to what we were doing with the airlines. You may recall when we were wanting to attract extra flights?
Yep.
And we were willing to put money up to say, if you come to a direct flight from El Paso to these other cities, we'll guarantee you an X amount of revenue. The public purpose is to raise the standard, raise services. And in this case, it's part of our revitalization of some certain areas and of our own facilities for the public's use. And so we would work with legal on that kind of structure, where we would set up a fund, maybe using some of our economic impact funds, to set aside a reserve for a certain amount that you would negotiate with the provider. We do, we do need to work through what those legal details would be and how it would work best. I'm asking, I know Veronica's having some connection issues, I believe she dropped off the line, but the most ideal situation would be able to get the current vendor to extend. We've tried, they've said no, but maybe we need to consider our terms with them to get them to extend and be much more flexible landlords, if you will.
Okay. And one other thought that came to my mind, you know, if we're going to be putting, if we're going to be subsidizing or if we're going to be putting, you know, money towards something like this, it may be, may be an option to explore. I mean, it's probably not going to be something that can be done really quickly, but, you know, I was just in Salt Lake City a couple of weeks ago, and I saw a model, it was a nonprofit that they had, it was running like a cafe/restaurant, and it basically served to provide jobs to homeless people or people that were coming out of the justice system or people that were homeless that didn't have jobs.
People that are homeless.
And so maybe that's, I mean, if we're going to be spending county money on something like this, maybe that's something that we can look into, and it'll serve also a social purpose as well as, you know, having, making sure that we have an operation that has food, you know, selling food here at the courthouse as well as Ascarate. I mean, I'm just throwing that out there right now because it's, you know, it's something that I saw recently that I feel like may be an option, so.
We, yes, sir. We also mentioned the idea that we saw, I don't know if you remember, but we saw a concept, and this is all things that the committee can work on, but we saw a concept when we were in Pittsburgh. You may recall, we went to a place that was a restaurant incubator.
Right.
And it had multiple providers, they were all very high quality.
Yeah.
But there were, it was a restaurant incubator for economic development, and you can put a component in there where it's helping some specific population with their workforce skills, giving back, things of that nature. But we went to that one in Pittsburgh where there was different providers, and it was very high quality and very hip, very cool place to go. So, I mean, those are all concepts that we could look into as well. Those are going to take some time.
I was just going to add, in terms of the economic development component, so Chapter 381 of your Texas Local Government Code is very broad in terms of what is permissible. And there's actually an exception under the Purchasing Act that provides if a contract is an economic development contract under Chapter 381 specifically, it is exempt from those requirements. But Chapter 381, in terms of this type, this type of idea that Ms. Keller just mentioned, business incubators, it's very intentional in terms of how that gets developed, what types of businesses get developed. All that to say that that's something very doable in terms of the ideas that could be spurred from this particular task force. So we can definitely work on that component on that end that would give us that, the legal ability to do, to do these type of arrangements for the restaurants.
Excellent, excellent. Okay, well, like I said, that was pretty much, I'd like to offer Nicole as the co-chairman of whatever you guys decide, and if that's viable, I think she's done a lot of work on it and has worked very well with parks, and so maybe that'll help. Like I said, I don't want, I don't think someone within the park would make sense because, you know, we want to see it from a broader spectrum and that there's objectivity in everything that we do. So I thank you for this opportunity to sort of bring it to light, and then we'll sort of start bringing it back and see how we could, you know, expedite this balance between now and something for the long haul. So thank you very much, appreciate it.
Judge, would you allow, I believe Veronica wanted to add something.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Veronica.
Yes, I just wanted to say, I hope you all can hear me, I'm having technical issues.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to add that, keep in mind that at the golf course, we have a clientele. We have customers lined up, ready to go. There is no problem finding customers for the golf course. We definitely already have a clientele there daily, seven days a week, 350, two days out of the year. 300.
No, we thank you.
Thank you.
We thank you for that. Okay, go ahead, Jessica, we could, there's no action on this item.
There's no action for item number seven. Judge, would you like to go to the items pulled from consent?
Please, uh-huh.
And Judge, I'm sorry, just in the interest of time after we do these items, could we go to executive session?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
We'll try to, we won't have a lunch till 1:00, so that way we could get as many things for both Commissioner O'Ginn and Commissioner Stout.
Okay, item 4I. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the binational Tourism Connection Hot Event Grant Award in support of the annual binational Tourism Connection Conference from December 1st through 3rd, 2021. Funding in the amount of $25,000 is available in SR Tourist Promotion Historical Events, contract number 2021-0779.
Well, I just want to introduce very quickly, and then I'll have Valerie sort of give all the ahs and ends. I don't know if we have a selle here, but, so I was approached with this project, I got really excited about it. It had happened, the first one happened in Chihuahua, and then having the second one so close by sort of gives us that synergism of what, you know, of what we could do. And Valerie will talk about who's participating, but they're looking at maybe almost 400 and plus individuals in the tourism... plus, um, individuals in, in the tourism business, that there'll be, the idea is to sell everything here at the border, create synergism. Uh, we've learned that people look for different things to come. For example, they come to Los Aranales in, in Juarez, then they can come to White Sands, and then you combine the two and create that synergism. Uh, so a lot of creative things that are taking place. Um, I'll be in a panel with Mayor Leeser and Mayor Miyagashima from Las Cruces on, on that certain, on that day, talking about the cultural perspective, and how some of the, the leaders in El Paso, or, you know, people that have, uh, you know, lineage back to, to Mexico are now in, in leadership positions, so that we can show, you know, how connected we are between Mexico and ourselves, and some other great ideas that are coming up. So, Valerie, I'll leave it to you. I know you've been working with Atacelli, and, and, and you also participated on the, on the first conference, and that would be a great perspective.
I'll provide that, Palacios.
Thank you.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Valerie Vanessa, Heritage Tourism Coordinator for Economic Development. And, uh, yes, Judge, I did have the honor and privilege of participating in the inaugural Bynational Tourism Connection Conference that was held just before the pandemic last February in Chihuahua City, and it was an incredible, uh, conference. It was comprehensive in that it promoted and celebrated, uh, all different types of tourism, everything from medical tourism to manufacturing tourism, of course, cultural heritage tourism. We took tours of the historic district and downtown Chihuahua, as well as visited a lot of the new developments in the more, uh, posh or cutting-edge type of, of sites that were available as far as restaurants. Um, it was just really, um, an incredible opportunity. Travel Texas from our State of Texas Department of Economic Development was present, and IC has plans to attend and has been promoting the event here throughout the state as well. As you know, we, we share a very large section of our, our Bynational, uh, border. And, um, I, I did include as part of the backup a short video, but Ms. Revelis, uh, was kind to provide an updated version if our AV team and if the court would allow us to, to share, so that you can have an idea of what this year's program here in El Paso, Texas, in partnership with Visit El Paso, Destination El Paso, uh, the, the conference is to take place here in downtown. Uh, but you may have noticed in the program that it does also include opportunities to visit the area. It, um, there's an opportunity for, to extend the conference beyond just Wednesday through Friday, to include a day of shopping throughout El Paso. On Saturday, there is a cultural heritage tour that will be taking place in the San Elizario, federally recognized National Register Historic District, uh, along with the, the closing dinner. Um, just a really, uh, great opportunity for us to celebrate all of the wonderful positive things that take place on both sides of, of the border. And, um, without further ado, um-
Thank you.
It's very exciting, but I will, I would love to, to share the video, if that's okay with, with the group.
Great debriefing, Valerie. Thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
The Bynational Tourism Connection. Two countries, one great region. The second edition in El Paso, Texas, 2021. A relationship-building event for the tourism industry in the 10 states along the Mexico and US border. Baja California, Sonora, Chihuahua, Coahuila, Nuevo Leon, and Tamaulipas. California, Arizona, New Mexico, and Texas. Offering Bynational tourist products enhances the attractiveness of each destination, creating safer and stronger bonds, and transforming this border into a highly competitive region. A rich and extensive border spanning more than 1,900 miles, cradled by the fruitful waters of the Pacific Ocean and the Gulf of Mexico. An exceedingly attractive region with a vast ecosystem of deserts, majestic mountains, sandy crystal beaches, and the principal waters of the Rio Grande and the Colorado River. Mexico is still the main commercial partner of the United States. Its commercial exchange exceeded $96 billion in the first two months of 2021, and reached more than $500 billion annually in previous years. With a population of over 101 million people in the 637 counties and cities of the 10 border states, there are endless interactions between the 24 urban centers at the border crossing ports. The international border transculturation provides a highly attractive and unique region that provides an unending possibility for tourism development. The differentiated value of the border region creates competitiveness in the tourism industry, enhancing its richness by consolidating Bynational corridors, programs, routes that highlight its regional attractions, and specializing in cultural, recreational, historic, business development, nature, sports, commercial, and medical tourism. The Bynational Tourism Connection is the platform to link and boost businesses into multiple initiatives with tourism partners. This event will alternate between Mexico and the United States with an expo, conferences, and business-to-business opportunities. The first Bynational Tourism Connection took place last year on February the 19th through the 21st in 2020, in Chihuahua City, and generated the participation of seven states, Sonora, Chihuahua, Coahuila, Nuevo Leon, Tamaulipas, Texas, and Arizona, an economic benefit of 10.5 million pesos for the tourism industry. The business networking generated 29.2 million pesos. There were 484 participants, 401 hotel rooms, 602 business transactions, and 20 post-tours. The 2021 Bynational Tourism Connection will take place on December the 1st through the 3rd in El Paso, Texas. The Bynational Tourism Connection. Two countries, one great region.
Well, pretty cool video. Really nice. Thank you, Valerie. Thank you, Michael, as well. So, that, that was the idea, just didn't want to lose that opportunity to highlight it, but I'd like to make a motion to approve that item.
Second?
Commissioner Ogier?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Valerie.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica?
Hope you all join us.
Absolutely.
Item 4J, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the second option to renew agreement with Dr. Deborah Ontiveros of Integrity EAP, doing business as Well Connect for psychological services provided for pre-employment and employment psychological examination services for the county Human Resources Office, Sheriff's Division. Funding is available in General Fund, HR, Professional Services, General. Contract number 2021-0676.
Thank you. Uh, Judge, Commissioners, the reason I brought this up is, uh, I think I just wanted to highlight the importance of this, this type of service, both for new incoming employees, and really for employees that are on the job every day. What we see every day is one El Paso. Uh, what they see every day and night is another El Paso, another El Paso that's more violent, more, uh, something that we don't see on a day-to-day basis. And, and sometimes, some of these first responders are really beginning to suffer from, uh, from PTSD. Uh, they don't realize, and this is a great opportunity to help them, uh, help them recover and be productive employees with our, with our law enforcement. So, uh, Michelle, I'll, I'll turn it over to you to describe the program. Thank you.
I think-
Thank you, Commissioner. I actually have our sheriff's office HR manager on with us, Ludia Velo, so I'll let her explain the contract, Commissioner. And if you have any questions, we are both here, though.
Ludina?
Um, good morning, County Judge and Commissioners. Ludia Velo, Human Resources Manager at the Sheriff's Office. The purpose of the contract is for psychological screening services for new hires and for fit-for-duty testing that may be required. In accordance with policy in Texas Commission on Law Enforcement License requirements, the sheriff's office is required to conduct both pre-employment tests, as well as fit-for-duty psychological examinations for detention officer and deputy academy candidates and active employees. An RFP process was initiated in March 9th, 2016, which led to the development of a multi-year contract. The original contract began in December 1st, 2018, and ended in November 30th, 2020. The contract had two additional one-year contract extension options. This is the second and final one-year option, which is approved, if approved, will expire November 30th of 2022. We are asking the county judge to sign the second option to renew with Dr. Ontiveros with Integrity EAP, effective December 1st, 2021.
Yeah, thank you. And it's a great program designed to, to assist the county, and more importantly, to assist our employees that are out there taking care of business, uh, and, and really facing the, the various items that, situations that we never see here in our day-to-day life. So, I, I make a motion to approve, and thank you all for describing it a little bit better than I do.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Ogier?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Ludina and Michelle, thank you very much. Great initiative.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioners.
We will now move to item 22, Executive Session. Commissioners' Court will now recess into Executive Session to discuss items 22A through 22C pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and 551.074. Commissioners' Court will reconvene to take official action.
Uh, Jessica, we have another item we're moving into Executive as well?
Yeah.
Item? No, that's okay. Uh, we'd like to move item number eight, discuss and take appropriate action.
It would be pursuant to Texas Government Code. Are we on still? Are we in open?
Yes, we're still in open.
Okay. Pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071, receive legal advice and consultation.
And item number eight is discuss and take appropriate action to approve the submission of written comments to the Texas Railroad Commission opposing possible utility rate increases to El Paso County residents' natural gas bills due to the February 2021 Texas winter storm. Your aye. Okay, Commissioners' Court will reconvene to-
We need to take action to move that into Executive Session. Jessica, sorry. So, we need a motion to approve to move that item into Executive Session, please. Thank you.
Commissioner Ogier?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Commissioners' Court will reconvene to take official action.
Time to get to eighteen. And nineteen.
Commissioners Court has reconvened to regular open session. Item number eight, county administration. Discuss and take appropriate action to approve the submission of written comments to the Texas Railroad Commission opposing possible utility rate increases to El Paso County residents' natural gas bills due to the February 2021 Texas winter storm URI.
Good afternoon, County Judge Commissioners. Jed Antorecker, Assistant County Attorney. At the request of members of Commissioners Court, our office has made initial inquiries into the proposed gas rate hike for El Paso County residents. It's clear that the purpose of the customer rate relief bonds authorized by the Texas Legislature in their last session HB 1520 was to reduce gas costs to customers that would otherwise have to pay these costs as a result of the extraordinary costs incurred by gas utilities because of winter storm URI. As per the discussion of this court, the County of El Paso opposes any rate increase not benefiting El Paso County gas customers. And accordingly, if it's the direction of this court that El Paso County officially oppose these rates with the Texas Railroad Commission, we request a motion to direct the El Paso County Attorney's Office to file opposition in the gas rates increase case via public comment.
I'm moved.
Okay.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just, Jed, I just wanted to publicly just make it clear that we are supporting, you know, the city in their efforts and we're allowing people to know that, you know, we need their support as well, like the state legislators, Congresswoman Escobar, and so forth, that, you know, we're very encouraging that we move forward and support the city. Just wanted to add that comment.
And County Judge, we will convey that support in our opposition to the Railroad Commission.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jessica, I believe next we wanted to go to, was it item eleven or twelve you wanted, Commissioner Stout?
Eleven.
Item number eleven, receive a report and discuss and take appropriate action regarding the CARES Act grant, the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act 2021, and the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021.
We have Jessica.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. This is Jessica with the Budget and Fiscal Policy Department. In today's report for CARES funds, there are no changes to the report from last week. Expenses and purchase orders are at 24.5 million. Excuse me, current commitments total just under one million, and the overall remaining funds total just over two million. 906,000 remains to cover ongoing PPE and operating costs, and 1.1 million are in the reserve account for the court's consideration. We continue to monitor the CARES spending and are working with the auditor and departments to close out purchase orders and monitor the subrecipient agreements. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Any questions? No. Go ahead, Jessica.
Next is the American Rescue Plan Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds Weekly Report. There are also no changes to this report. Committed in natural expenses total 31.8 million. We are working with the Auditor's Office for new GL codes and administration to reformat this report to reflect the projects approved on 10/25. This concludes today's update, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
No, no questions. Thank you so much, Jessica. Appreciate your time.
Can I just ask, Judge? Jessica, when do you think we can see the updated report based on the approved projects? Do you know when that might be ready?
We're hoping that it'll be ready for next week. I think it just depends on how quickly the Auditor's Office can format the GL codes. They're working on quarterly reports that are due for other grants this week.
Okay, thank you.
No action for item number eleven. We'll go ahead and move to item number eighteen, litigation, justice, and law enforcement. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign and accept the Department of Justice FY21 federal grant for community-oriented policing services, crisis intervention team, for the Sheriff's Office from September 1st, 2021 to August 31st, 2023, in the amount of $191,500. No county match is required. Contract number 2021-0829.
Who do we have, Miguel, on the line?
Lieutenant Gallardo, are you going to speak to this item?
You're muted, Lieutenant.
They might have not known, right, Betsy, that we moved ahead?
These were federal funds that we applied for and requested to help with CIT funding. It is part of our overall budget that we planned for when we allocated the amount that we would be using from our ARP dollars. We did take this grant into account and we budgeted the difference, but this is for FY21 federal grant for the CIT team that we currently have implemented.
Okay, I'll move to approve.
Okay. Second?
Yeah.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number nineteen, approve and authorize the county judge to sign and accept the Texas Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division FY21 Edward Byrne Memorial Program Crisis Intervention Team Grant Award from October 1st, 2021 to September 30th, 2022, in the amount of $299,455.47. On behalf of the El Paso County Sheriff's Office, no county match is required. Contract number 2021-0845.
Betsy, you want to?
I apologize, was this number nineteen?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Yes, this is very similar. This is a grant that we did account for. It's the JAG program, and again, it is being used to help fund the crisis intervention team through September 30th, the rest of this fiscal year, and it's in the amount of $299,455.47. We did account for this in our planning for filling the gap for the CIT team.
Okay, I'll move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I do, Judge, and Commissioners, want to thank the Sheriff's Office and our grant team. They worked really diligently to look for these different funding sources and then also with, working with budget and grants to identify the gap that we're going to be using ARP funding to help fill and some of our CARES money as well.
Thank you, and I know we got a little ahead of them, so we apologize, but I know that, you know, we're very supportive, so thank you, Betsy.
Now moving to item number twenty-one under Public Works. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the contract between owner and contractor with EP Big Media Inc. for the construction of a full-color LED sign at Ascara de Park in the amount of $402,542.55. Funds are available in CIP20 Parks Cap Out Parks Improvement. Contract number 2021-0618.
Commissioner?
Good morning. Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Norma Rivera Palacios with the Public Works Department. The item before you is a contract for the construction of the Ascara de LED sign. The sign will be installed on the south side of the park, perpendicular to the Cesar Chavez Loop 375 highway. The sign will be used to promote Ascara de Park and events to be held at the park. I'm available to answer any questions the court may have.
I was just saying, Commissioner Leon, you want to introduce this item?
I tell you, I'm very excited about it. And Norma, also, hopefully, we can get information on that sign that denotes what's going on.
Be right behind the golf course, so that, and it's a double-sided, thirty-five-foot-high sign structure, twenty feet wide, so you can see it going east or west on Loop 375. And the LED screen itself is 22 feet by 12 feet. So you won't be able to miss it, and we will be able to advertise not just, as you mentioned, Commissioner Leon, not just events or programs happening at Ascara de Park, all county parks, and also in the County of El Paso, so we can also advertise anything else that we have going on in the county, like in the Paksipu, we're having the power flu shots, you know, or we were having COVID testing or anything like that, that will also be available.
Well, Commissioner Leon's, today, your resolution on the task force or the drug or getting kits not to, I mean, that's going to be amazing. I wonder, do you have visibility from Mexico? Because it sure would be cool if there was things that they could see, but I'm not sure of the, how it sits, that if Juarez would be able to see some of the signage.
I'm sure they're going to be able to see the sign, not directly, but if you're standing either coming from the east or the west on their side, you will be able to see it.
Oh, that is, that is really nice.
And, and, correct me if I'm wrong, ladies, but it's not just like a metal pole, it's a really nicely designed, it's going to be extremely attractive.
Yeah.
You're correct, Betsy.
Nothing like signage, nothing like signage. Wanted concession. Said wanted concession. Yeah, you move to approve, yeah.
Okay.
He wanted to go.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'm sorry, Jessica, can we jump to thirteen? Item thirteen, before, that's the last one I wanted to hit before, before I head out.
Yeah. Go ahead. Jessica.
Okay, item number thirteen, discuss and take appropriate action regarding the Commissioners Court meeting schedule for November, December, and January.
Judge, Commissioners, we place this item every year because of the holiday schedule, so this year, we want to explain just a couple things. Well, while Thanksgiving holidays are the 25th and the 26th, it's very difficult for us to put together an agenda and be prepared and ready for the 29th. It's a very quick turnaround time to have it posted and all the information compiled. We, if you want to have a meeting on the 29th, we'll make it happen, we'll figure out a way, but it's just something we always like the court to take under consideration, that for our, for our staff who's putting the agenda together and the departments, it's a very short turnaround time to do an agenda. So it's that Monday following Thanksgiving that's often difficult.
And we did that last year, right?
Correct. Last year, I believe you did not meet the Monday after Thanksgiving.
It's also for us to do justice to the agenda by having things like that, so, I mean, I agreed last time, I agree now, I don't know how everybody feels.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay, so no meeting on the 29th, and then this year, the way our holidays fall, it actually works that you recognize Christmas Eve is a holiday, so we're already off Friday, and because of that, since Christmas is on Saturday, you recognize the holiday the following Monday. So the 27th is actually a holiday, as well as January 4th. So you won't have meetings those two, or January 3rd, I apologize. You won't have meetings those two days already. So that's, the 29th is the only day I think that we need the court to act upon. Sometimes you have requested, and of course, this is your prerogative, if you go back to November, Miguel or Alexis, sometimes the court has requested to not meet the 22nd, the whole week of Thanksgiving, but we ask that you not meet the 29th. We're, we can definitely pull an agenda together for the 22nd. It's whatever the pleasure the court is. You will be meeting on November 18th normally for your special meeting.
Well, and we had talked earlier, Betsy, about, you know, our county employees have really, I mean, it's been a long haul kind of situation, and if we're able to give them that, that opportunity, because everybody has to pitch in to do that, but that's my only recommendation, is that they get a, you know, things slow down in November anyway, and.
And also, Judge, I don't know if we want to, if we want to not have one on the 22nd, because I think at least EPISD is now, has a whole, the whole week off for Thanksgiving, so people may be wanting to take time off if they have kids, you know?
And.
I don't know the other ISDs, but I think that EPISD has a, because they went to a year-round type schedule, and so I think they're given a whole week.
We would put your bill pay on for the 18th of November, so anything that requires critical time, we could put on for the special meeting on November 18th. So what I'm hearing is the court may, the court is proposing to not meet the 22nd or 29th of November, and then those last, the last Monday in December, as well as the first Monday in January are already holidays, so you would not meet those days either.
Mm-hmm. We agree. Thank you, Betsy.
Thank you all.
Jacob from Twilight.
Okay, so we're asking that there be a motion that the court not meet November 22nd or 29th for a Thanksgiving break.
So moved.
And also, do you want to include the December 27th and November?
Those are holidays.
Yeah, those are holidays, so suggest those two.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Judge, thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Are there any other items you would like to hear before?
I don't have any other items, and I'll probably be leaving.
Do you want to break it this time? Are you okay with breaking? Yeah, let's go ahead and.
Okay. For one hour, Judge? For one hour?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioners Court will recess for one hour. It is 12:43.
Thank you.
Most of us have pets, and we know that we have to take care of them and give them a home with love, but when our resources are not enough, we need to find out a better life for them. Fortunately, here in El Paso, the Animal Welfare Department is here to help. Every morning, the officers of the El Paso County Animal Welfare Department get into their trucks and set off for different parts of the county to help citizens with their pets.
My main job is to protect, capture, and care for animals, educate the community. We do everything from our trucks, we do foster transportations, we do adoptions, we do microchipping.
El Paso County is one of the largest counties in the state of Texas, and its Animal Welfare Department has only eight officers to cover all the land outside the city.
The county is very big in terrain, it's bigger than the city, actually, but the houses are kind of sporadic. It's a lot of terrain to cover.
Today's mission is to collect some puppies and a little pig on the outskirts of the county. From a man who no longer has enough resources to support them. In 2020, the Animal Welfare Department rescued a total of 1,769 animals, of which 231 were returned to their owners and 418 were adopted. After giving the men information about the spay and neuter services, Eriberto takes the puppies and the little pig to a shelter on the other side of the county, where they will find a family for them.
The name of the rescue here is Almost Home, and it's a big foster, 58 hours. They help us a lot with our transition, so these dogs don't sit food at the shelter at the animal services.
After leaving the animals in good hands. After leaving the animals in good hands, Ericko drives away to a new mission.
El Paso goes by many names. Sun City. 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large U.S. cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the U.S.-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also keep true to our southern hospitality with plenty of outdoor recreation options. It's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
Most of us have pets, and we know that we have to take care of them and give them a home with love. But when our resources are not enough, we need to find out a better life for them. Fortunately, here in El Paso, the Animal Welfare Department is here to help. Every morning, the officers of the El Paso County Animal Welfare Department get into their trucks and set off for different parts of the county to help citizens with their pets.
My main job is to protect, capture, and care for animals, educate the community. We do everything from our trucks. We do foster transportations. We do adoptions. We do microchipping.
El Paso County is one of the largest counties in the state of Texas, and its Animal Welfare Department has only eight officers to cover all the land outside the city.
The county is very big in terrain. It's bigger than the city, actually. But the houses are kind of sporadic. It's a lot of terrain to cover.
Today's mission is to collect some puppies and a little pig on the outskirts of the county. From a man who no longer has enough resources to support them. In 2020, the Animal Welfare Department rescued a total of 1,769 animals, of which 231 were returned to their owners and 418 were adopted. After giving them any information about the spay and neuter services, Ericko takes the puppies and the little pig to a shelter on the other side of the county, where they will find a family for them.
The name of the rescue here is Almost Home, and it's a big foster affiliate of ours. They help us a lot with our transition. So these dogs don't sit food at the shelter at the animal services.
After leaving the animals in good hands, Ericko drives away to a new mission.
El Paso goes by many names: Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved, and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce. With 72% of our population being bilingual, we stay competitive among other large US cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center - El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the US-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also keep true to our southern hospitality, with plenty of outdoor recreation options. It's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
Most of us have pets, and we know that we have to take care of them and give them a home with love. But when our resources are not enough, we need to find out a better life for them. Fortunately, here in El Paso, the Animal Welfare Department is here to help. Every morning, the officers of the El Paso County Animal Welfare Department get into their trucks and set off for different parts of the county to help citizens with their pets.
My main job is to protect, capture, and care for animals, educate the community. We do everything from our trucks, we do foster transportations, we do adoptions, we do microchipping.
El Paso County is one of the largest counties in the state of Texas, and its Animal Welfare Department has only eight officers to cover all the land outside the city.
The county is very big in terrain, it's bigger than the city actually, but the houses are kind of sporadic. It's a lot of terrain to cover.
Today's mission is to collect some puppies and a little pig on the outskirts of the county.
It's a baby, right?
It's a...
It's a baby, it's a month, two weeks.
From a man who no longer has enough resources to support them. In 2020, the Animal Welfare Department rescued a total of 1,769 animals, of which 231 were returned to their owners and 418 were adopted. After giving the man information about the spay and neuter services, Ericko takes the puppies and the little pig to a shelter on the other side of the county where they will find a family for them.
The name of the rescue here is Almost Home, and it's a big foster affiliate of ours. They help us a lot with our transition, so these dogs own, set food at the shelter at the animal services.
After leaving the animals in good hands, Ericko drives away to a new mission.
El Paso goes by many names: Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large US cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the US-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelor's, 74 master's, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also keep true to our southern hospitality, with plenty of outdoor recreation options. It's easy to keep active in El Paso.
We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process.
No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together. El Paso goes by many names: Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large US cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the US-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelor's, 74 master's, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also keep true to our southern hospitality, with plenty of outdoor recreation options. It's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
Most of us have pets, and we know that we have to take care of them and give them a home with love. But when our resources are not enough, we need to find out a better life for them. Fortunately, here in El Paso, the Animal Welfare Department is here to help. Every morning, the officers of the El Paso County Animal Welfare Department get into their trucks and set off for different parts of the county to help citizens with their pets.
My main job is to protect, capture, and care for animals, educate the community. We do everything from our trucks. We do foster transportations. We do adoptions. We do microchipping.
El Paso County is one of the largest counties in the state of Texas, and its Animal Welfare Department has only eight officers to cover all the land outside the city.
The county is very big in terrain. It's bigger than the city, actually, but the houses are kind of sporadic. It's a lot of terrain to cover.
Today's mission is to collect some puppies and a little pig on the outskirts of the county. From a man who no longer has enough resources to support them. In 2020, the Animal Welfare Department rescued a total of 1,769 animals, of which 231 were returned to their owners and 418 were adopted. After giving them any information about the spay and neuter services, Erickto takes the puppies and the little pig to a shelter on the other side of the county where they will find a family for them.
The name of the rescue here is Almost Home, and it's a big foster facility of ours. They help us a lot with our transition. So these dogs own, sit food at the shelter, at the animal services.
After leaving the animals in good hands, Erickto drives away to a new mission.
El Paso goes by many names: Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved, and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce. With 72% of our population being bilingual, we stay competitive among other large U.S. cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the U.S.-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business, but we also keep true to our southern hospitality. With plenty of outdoor recreation options, it's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
Ready? Okay. Commissioners Court has reconvened into regular open session. I'd like to start with the regular order of the agenda.
Any preference, or do you want to go back to the regular order?
I think, Judge, if we went through the original order, some of these items are going to go really quickly. I believe some of them are... So I think we can go back to the original order, sir.
Okay. And then, or you don't want to go to... Executive will just keep it at the end, right?
Just keep it at the end, I believe, sir.
Perfect.
Okay. Item number nine, under county administration, discuss and take appropriate action to authorize the El Paso County Commissioners Court to adopt and sign an order redrawing El Paso County Commissioner precinct boundaries based on the 2020 census. Opinion number 21-1270.
Judge Commissioners, we're asking for no action on this item this week.
That is correct.
We'll place it on your agenda again next week. The maps have been advertised, but next week we will be asking for action to approve the maps as proposed.
Perfect. Thank you.
And the court will have to decide between the majority map and the minority map.
Okay. Item number 10, discuss and take appropriate action authorizing the El Paso County Commissioners Court to adopt and sign an order redrawing El Paso County Justice of the Peace and Constable precinct boundaries based on 2020 census. Opinion number 21-1270.
Same for this item. Maps have been advertised. We will be asking for action on this item next week, except in this case, there's only one proposed map.
Thank you.
Item number 12, discuss and take appropriate action regarding El Paso County's preparation and response for COVID-19.
Just one moment, Judge. I'm going to make sure we have somebody from the city, from Dr. Ocaranza or Chief Rodriguez. I do see Dr. Ocaranza. Good afternoon, Dr. Ocaranza.
Good afternoon, Betsy, Judge Commissioners, and good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to give you an update on the COVID-19 situation here in El Paso. And unfortunately, we're in stage two of the dashboard. The scorecard has two main factors that have pushed that level to level two or stage two. One of them is the increase that we have in the positive cases. Positivity rate has gone up, but also on the hospitalization, we have seen a slight increase in the hospitalization, and that makes the scorecard go to stage two. We continue to see that the positive cases are mostly due to the unvaccinated individuals. And we continue to keep inviting them, provide that information so they can make the right decision and have more people vaccinated. Thankfully, we can continue to see an increase in the vaccination rate. And now that it's going to be very, very soon approved by the CDC, the vaccination for children five years to 11 years of age, we expect that initially, we're going to be seeing a lower number on the fully vaccinated eligible individuals, but that's because we added an extra demographic group. But slowly, it's going to be catching up, and hopefully, we can vaccinate those children along with the parents that haven't received the vaccine. We continue to strongly recommend all the non-pharmacological interventions such as wearing the mask, washing the hands, and keeping the proper hygiene, and staying home whenever sick. This is going to be a very active flu season, and as we have seen with other respiratory viruses, so we're also recommending flu shots for everybody. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, doctor. We've got some challenging times, and we will be opening the bridges November 8th, which adds a little bit to the complexity, but I feel very confident
Yes. And the good thing is that they're going to be fully vaccinated individuals crossing, and we're happy to provide the booster shot to those that request the vaccination. So I think it's going to be very successful how we provide that vaccination. But also, we expect that we're going to be having an increase in the testing as well.
We have been pushing really hard for if the two... If the parent is vaccinated and there's a child 12 to 18, or now under, that they would allow that. But have you heard if that's been formalized? They were open to it, but I don't know if they've actually agreed that it could be if the child's not vaccinated but the parents are that they could bring them over, because obviously, that would allow us to help out in those instances.
I haven't seen anything official yet, although they've been very open to that possibility, because in other countries, they haven't started with the vaccination of minors. So I don't think that that's going to be a problem, as long as the parents are vaccinated. And hopefully, if they allow them to cross, we can vaccinate those children that are eligible to receive the vaccine on this side of the border as well.
Exactly. Thank you, doctor.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Chief?
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. Thank you for having us again. Pupiel Rodriguez, Emergencies Management Coordinator for the City County Office of Emergency Management. Not much to update. Dr. Ocaranza covered most points, but as usual, I'll just cover quickly our vaccination efforts on where we're at. Individuals with at least one dose over the age of 12 were at 90.21%. Fully vaccinated, 77.5%. Our elderly population over the age of 65 are at 99.99% for at least one dose, and those fully vaccinated are at 90.47%. We've had an increase in vaccines administered over the last two weeks. We did 15,209 last week as a county as a whole, including all providers, and 10,926 the week prior to that. So, and that in large part is attributed to the booster vaccines that have expanded beyond the Pfizer to include Moderna and Johnson &amp; Johnson. So we continue to provide those at our various locations. Again, just for the community's knowledge and information, we are providing the booster shots at our three locations, at 301 George Perry and the Convention Center. Those are available there. They can make an appointment at epsrong.org. And then they can also go to epcovidvaccine.com to register at the COVID clinics, as well at George Perry and the Convention Center. So those resources remain available. Like Dr. Ocaranza mentioned, we are anticipating an increase in testing over the next several weeks since our cases have increased for the last two weeks. So we're making sure we have those resources in place. Our three sites continue to be open at UTEP, the Don Haskins Recreation Center on the west side, and the county sports park is open seven days a week for the entire community. So with that, unless you all have any questions for me, I'll turn it back. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
I've got a quick question.
Yeah, there's a question from Commissioner Leon. Chief?
Chief, how are you doing? Thank you for your information. I know I got my booster last week at the Eastside Clinic, and I noticed that it was full. Have we seen any kind of rush like we did with the initial vaccinations?
So we've seen... We have seen an increase since Pfizer... Since the booster was initially limited to Pfizer, that did limit the initial surge or rush of demand. But now that they moved it up to Moderna and Johnson &amp; Johnson, our numbers have increased. So we're expecting that, that the numbers now are going to be a lot higher than they were when we just had Pfizer. So, but no, we... Again, that's why the Convention Center continues to be open to be able to take in that volume. And then we also have the George Perry location. So we'll be monitoring that and modifying our staffing and scheduling as needed.
I guess as we go forward with the boosters and we see that there is... Well, there is a need for it, but for people that can't make it downtown or to the various locations where they're being offered, do we start a program again like we did with the initial vaccines where we have them at East Montana, where we have them at Fabens, and all these outliers over in Canotillo?
Yes, sir. We met last week between the Real Grand Council of Governments, ESD1, also the city providers, just to have that discussion last week. So we're going to be getting back together to see what the demand is. At this point, we're really gauging the demand to start really making those determinations, but we're going to be meeting later this week to have those discussions and see how we can best serve the community. So thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. I guess once you have those discussions, you will reach out to us to...
Yes, sir.
To see what the feelings are out there. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess, Chief, we'll keep a good eye on the opening on the 8th of the bridges, right? Because that'll sort of tell us the dynamics. And so maybe we could be ready in any moment that if we see that the amount of demand increases immediately, I mean, we're willing to think about the Coliseum, willing to... I know George Perry probably would be an option, but just depending to see. I guess in my mind, I'm thinking that because of the booster and everything, we're going to go back to the initial stages of the hubs and all the things that we did. But maybe, I think we'll take it, you know, take it one step at a time, see what happens.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. We'll keep the court informed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I do know, Chief, that's part of why I think the city acquired certain facilities was to have ability to have hubs in various areas and be responsive to the demand as we move throughout the pandemic. Is that correct?
Sure. So the clinical setting for the four COVID clinics, those were intended to, one, kind of be that long-term approach for vaccines, you know, when that demand did wane and it just becomes more like your regular flu season. So they have some capacity, but that's why we've kept open our larger hub locations in case we do see a big demand. So we're monitoring those numbers closely, but we'll also be collaborating with our other partners in the school districts to see how best we can meet that demand. But yeah, that's great, Betsy. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Betsy. Thank you.
Judge, do you have updates for us?
Yeah, mine is very... Just based on that we did meet with the mayor in Juarez and had an opportunity to talk to him about his excitement of wanting to make sure we get the 12 to 17. He's still very open, willing to do anything that is required. So we're going to have a meeting once again to see. The sort of changing condition is that if they do allow the children to pass, and we still don't... The ones that we are likely going to get are the ones that wouldn't have a visa, you know. So it's... People are saying, well, why, if we're able to give it to them on this side, then why would we not just wait and not do the Torneo project? The problem is that very unlikely, well, the ones that we vaccinate would have had a visa. The other thing is there's an expectation that people are going to come in because of the... Get vaccinated. But what we've learned is there's such a backlog of visas that were, you know, that just expired because they weren't able to get them, you know, renew them. And so there's a backlog that's going to take for a long, long time. So this idea that a lot of people are going to come in might not be as much as we think. So maybe it'll give us a little bit of time to do it gradually instead of people. Because there was one of the questions, are we going to get overflowed the first day, or what's going to happen? And... But we looked at the statistics, and it's a big number of people that have not updated their visas. So we'll look at that. And that's about it, you know, just trying to figure out, like I said, the logistics is totally different. If we've got J&amp;J as a boost, I mean, as a... For children, that would have... That would solve a lot of the issues, because right now, it would be two, and it's almost $1 million that it would cost if we compared it exactly to the Torneo project. It would be $2 million plus. The length would be so long because we have 20 per bus because a parent has to be with them. And so a lot of logistic things. I can tell you that the mayor's been extremely, extremely cooperative in wanting to do anything that it takes to... For us to help him out. So that's all I've got, Betsy.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Leon?
No new information.
Thank you.
Commissioner Robinson?
Yeah, just to cover... Reiterate a couple of things that we talked about earlier this morning. The Kindergarten House is now named after Ricky Marino. It's a reality. Appreciate all the support that we had to make that happen. Better News Day Parade will be November 6th, this Saturday, the one here downtown. And for those veterans who are available, interested, Golden Corral will be providing free meal on the 11th from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at all the Golden Corrals in El Paso. Nothing else for right now.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We'll take no action for item number 12. Item number 14, purchasing. Approve Award of Bid 21-032, Upsala Drive Drainage Improvement for the County of El Paso to Allen Concrete LLC of El Paso, Texas, as indicated in the bid tabulation. Purchasing approved on October 25th, 2021. Funds are available in general fund, road and bridge, flood, CNT, stormwater improvement.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Joe Lopez, interim purchasing agent, for the record. We issued a bid to hire a contractor to demolish, dispose of the low-water crossing located at Upsala Road. This is to reconstruct it using reinforced concrete paving, install guardrails, signs, and a maintenance road, according to the contract. And they will be supplying all the tools and materials and equipment for this job. We request that you approve the Award of Bid 21-033, Upsala Drive Drainage Improvement for the County of El Paso to Allen Concrete for the amount of $253,262.
Joe, this is Carlos Leon. You mentioned the bid number was 21-0-33, but I've got...
32, I'm sorry.
32, okay. Okay. Move to approve.
Commissioner Olgin is absent. Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout is absent. Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 15.
Just a second, Betsy or Christina. The amount is on the actual item, is that okay? Because... okay? Because you mentioned the, the amount, but it's not on the actual item?
No, Judge, that's fine. That's fine if it's not on the, on the item. That's fine.
Typically, it'll be there. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Judge, it's in the backup documents.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that, but I was wondering if, for public purposes, if it needed to
We should be consistent unless there's some unusual reason. Judge, thank you for noting that, and we'll look into it. But it's okay, but we should be consistent either way.
Yeah, because that way the public, sometimes they'll just read that part. So thank you.
I'll talk to my staff about it.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Item number 15. Approve the purchase of 60-month copier lease solutions for the county purchasing department using DIR CPO 4437 and Region 19, Contract Number 21-7400, awarded to Spectrum Imaging Technologies of El Paso, Texas, for a monthly cost of $3,064.80, annual amount of $36,777.60, and total contract term amount of $183,888. Purchasing approved on October 25th, 2021. Funding is available in general fund, purchasing, rent leases.
Good afternoon, Joe Lopez, interim purchasing agent, for the record. This is a five-year contract for actually for the equipment, for my office, for my print shop and mailroom. These are the machines that do all the copies for the county and all the carbonless forms for the county. We do about over 2 million copies in the course of the year, and more than 3 million carbonless forms for the year. And this is for my machines. This is off of the DIR contract for my Rizal Gras, which do the carbonless, and off of the Region 19 for my, my copier machines. We request that you approve this to Spectrum Imaging Technologies for $183,888.
Move to approve. Okay.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Take care and be safe.
Joe, thank you. And Nicole will be reaching out on this item this morning, because we really want to expedite it. So we'll try to see if we could get something going quickly.
Okay, Judge, Nicole and I have already been kind of spitballing a few ideas, so we have some other options out there. We're working on it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item number 16, auditor. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding overages and shortages for the period of April 1st, 2021 through September 30th, 2021.
Edward, welcome.
Good afternoon, Judge, Commissioners of the Deon County Auditor. This is a housekeeping item. The last act, time you acted on this was last May 3rd for the first half of the year. This is pursuant to Local Government Code 157903. It states that the Commissioners' Court of a County by order may provide for indemnification of an official or appointed county officer after, against personal liability for the loss of county funds or loss of damage of personal property incurred by the officer in the performance of their duties if the loss was not the result of the officer's negligence or criminal action. Departmental overages and shortages for the period of April 1, 21 through September 30, 2021 have been submitted and summarized. The shortages are $404.7. They're minimal in relation to the revenues for the same timeframe. No evidence of negligence was noted, or shortages appear to be the result of cost of doing a business. At this point, my recommendation would be to find that the shortages are not due to negligence or criminal action and indemnify the respective officers and approve the indemnification of an aggregate shortages in the amount of $404.7.
Move to approve. Thank you.
Second?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Have a great afternoon.
Edward, likewise.
Item number 17, judiciary and corrections. Approve and authorize the county judge to accept the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division Specialty Courts Program grant award for the 384th Adult Drug Court Program from September 1st, 2021 through August 31st, 2022, in the amount of $139,078. No county match is required. Contract number 2021-0860.
Good afternoon. Cynthia Caro with the Adult Probation Department. Earlier this year, I came before you to, to request that I submit a grant with the Governor's Office. You did allow me to do so. And now I'm here before you again to request your approval to go ahead and accept the grant in the amount of $139,078.
Move to approve.
And of course, if you have any questions on the program, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Second?
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for the continued support.
Thank you. Best to all your department. We appreciate what you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Really means a lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 20, public works. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the project grant agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for the American Rescue Plan Section 5311 intercity bus grant in the amount of $203,000, I'm sorry, $203,683. No county match is required. Contract 2021-0817.
Good afternoon, Judge. Commissioner Sal Alonso from the Planning and Development Department. Hope everybody's doing well today. This item before you is an award that we received from Tech dot. These funds are through the ARP. These funds will be going towards our ICB program with M dot partnership that we have with them. Staff recommends approval. I'm happy to answer any questions the court may have.
Yes, question from Commissioner Leon, please.
Sal, can, can you describe what this, these improvements are going to be, just a little more in detail?
Sure. It's not necessarily improvements, Commissioner. These funds are going towards the operation of our intercity, intercity bus services that we have with partnership with New Mexico, New Mexico DOT. This is one of our routes that we have, we call it the Gold Route. And this is the route that goes from El Paso to Las Cruces for our commuters who travel back and forth. So all these funds are going to the operations to keep this project going.
Okay. Well, thank you. Move to approve.
Sal, real quick, what, what's the level of participation? I mean, is it, are the expectations we had, are they being met? The, the number of riders, et cetera?
No, absolutely. This is one of our, one of our routes that, that we do get a high ridership. I could get to those numbers. I just don't know them off the top of my head. I've got a lot of numbers running through my head. This is not one of them. But no, this is a successful program that, that we've been, been able to partner up with New Mexico DOT and Tech dot. We always get asked about this project because this is one of our successful stories that we had in the transit program that we have.
Excellent. Thank you.
We had a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sal.
And this now brings us into executive session. Commissioners' Court will recess into executive session to discuss items 22A through 22C pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and 551.074. Commissioners' Court will reconvene to take official action.
a home with love. But when our resources are not enough, we need to find out a better life for them. Fortunately, here in El Paso, the Animal Welfare Department is here to help. Every morning, the officers of the El Paso County Animal Welfare Department get into their trucks and set off for different parts of the county to help citizens with their pets.
My main job is to protect, capture, and care for animals, educate the community. We do everything from our trucks. We do foster transportations. We do adoptions. We do microchipping.
El Paso County is one of the largest counties in the state of Texas, and its Animal Welfare Department has only eight officers to cover all the land outside the city.
The county is very big in terrain. It's bigger than the city, actually. But the houses are kind of sporadic. It's a lot of terrain to cover.
Today's mission is to collect some puppies and a little pig on the outskirts of the county. From a man who no longer has enough resources to support them. In 2020, the Animal Welfare Department rescued a total of 1,769 animals, of which 231 were returned to their owners and 418 were adopted. After giving the men information about the spay and neuter services, Erickto takes the puppies and the little pig to a shelter on the other side of the county, where they will find a family for them.
The name of the rescue here is Almost Home, and it's a big foster, 58 hours. They help us a lot with, with our transition. So these dogs own, set food at the shelter, at the animal services.
After leaving the animals in good hands, Erickto drives away to a new mission.
El Paso goes by many names. Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved, and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce, with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large US cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the US-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. The University of Texas at El Paso offers seventy-four bachelors, seventy-four masters, and twenty-two doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also keep true to our southern hospitality, with plenty of outdoor recreation options. It's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together. Come see what we can do together.
Most of us have pets, and we know that we have to take care of them and give them a home with love. But when our resources are not enough, we need to find out a better life for them. Fortunately, here in El Paso, the Animal Welfare Department is here to help. Every morning, the officers of the El Paso County Animal Welfare Department get into their trucks and set off for different parts of the county to help citizens with their pets.
My main job is to protect, capture, and care for animals, educate the community. We do everything from our trucks. We do foster transportations. We do adoptions. We do microchipping.
El Paso County is one of the largest counties in the state of Texas, and its Animal Welfare Department has only eight officers to cover all the land outside the city.
The county is very big in terrain. It's bigger than the city, actually. But the houses are kind of sporadic. It's a lot of terrain to cover.
Today's mission is to collect some puppies and a little pig on the outskirts of the county. From a man who no longer has enough resources to support them. In 2020, the Animal Welfare Department rescued a total of 1,769 animals, of which 231 were returned to their owners and 418 were adopted. After giving the men information about the spay and neuter services, Erickto takes the puppies and the little pig to a shelter on the other side of the county, where they will find a family for them.
The name of the rescue here is Almost Home, and it's a big foster affiliate of ours. They help us a lot with our transition. So this dog's own set food at the shelter at the animal services.
After leaving the animals in good hands, Erickto drives away to a new mission.
El Paso goes by many names: Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved, and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce, with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large US cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the US-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also keep true to our southern hospitality, with plenty of outdoor recreation options. It's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
Commissioners Court has reconvened to a regular open session. Item number 23: Discuss and take appropriate action to grant a court clerk intermediate of the JP 5 Department up to five additional days of ADC. Opinion number 211098.
Just based on the discussions in executive session, the recommended motion for this would be approved to grant, if necessary, a court clerk intermediate of the JP 5 Department up to five additional days of ADC. That would be the motion.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. And for item 22C: Discuss pending litigation style JNC Development Inc. versus Dan Williams et al. Clause number 2018 DCV 2863, county attorney's file number 018118LD, pursuant to Texas Government Code, section 551.071. We are asking for postponement of one week. Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. And this concludes all the items on today's agenda, Judge.
Thank you. Thank everybody for... We lost a couple of people on our way. Not on purpose, but...
Been a rough one.
Yeah. So, no, thank everyone for being here. Our interpreter is back there. Thank you for being with us and everyone else. So, thank you, everybody. Have a great and productive week. Thank you.
This concludes today's meeting. At 2:58 PM.